Good evening. My name's Barney Arnold. I'm the Chair of the Select Board. Welcome to the Carlisle Select Board meeting on June 23rd, 2022. This evening, we will be interviewing the three finalists for the Town Administrator position. I just want to quickly review the sort of format and the agenda. So each of the three candidates will have an hour for their interview. And John Petron, who is with Community Paradigm and has been helping us with the search, he'll be sort of posing the initial questions and then Select Board members can do follow-up questions as desired. We will have a 30-minute recess after the first interview for a dinner break, and then we will return for the 6:45 interview with Michael McCall. And we'll have a 15-minute recess after that one until 8 o'clock when we have the final candidate, Andrew McLean. And for the, let's see, benefit of the full Select Board, we will adjourn to the meeting, the room across the way for our dinner break. We are, we have received, in addition to the packet that has been posted online, the Select Board members have a work sample from each of the candidates. And so at the end of the question period, we will set aside some time to make sure we have an opportunity to hear from each of the candidates. Just a very quick, hopefully a one-minute summary of one of their work samples, if they gave us more than one, and then we'll have a chance to ask some questions. And then we will conclude by allowing the candidate to offer closing remarks if they'd like to. Anything else I should mention, John?
No, I think we're ready to go.
Ready to go. Okay, great. So let's invite Ryan McLean to join us. And just FYI, you know, and he's the Town Administrator from Hubbardston, currently in Hubbardston. And he is the last one in the pack, if you're going off for your, yeah, okay. He was in the first pack. I don't know if he was in the last pack. He was last, yeah, the third one, yeah.
Yes.
And for those of you watching, we're glad to have any and all people listening in. We are not going to be taking any community input or any questions from the community, but we are glad to see you.
There's a chat over, maybe we should check.
Oh, I'm not online. Okay, okay, great. And, oh, hi. Yes, thank you. And Mark, would you just check the Dave Adams name on there?
We don't know where he is. I just texted him.
Does it give a phone number? I'm just curious who Dave Adams is. And I apologize if you're a Carlisle resident and I don't recognize your name, but usually you can see at least the, can't you see at least the phone number? Nothing. David, what's it say on there? I can't read it from here. No, that's Steve Bastek. Hi, Steve. Yeah. Dave Adams, would you mind identifying yourself? We just generally like to know who's attending our meetings.
No problem. My name is David Adams. I'm a resident of Southbridge and also a town councilor.
Ah, from Southbridge. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ryan, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. And to introduce ourselves, you know, John, of course.
I'm Nathan Travis, Select Board member.
Nice to meet you again.
Travis now.
Barney Arnold, nice to see you again.
Kate Reed.
And then David Modell is the fifth member who should be here shortly. Yeah. Great, yeah. All right, I'm gonna turn it over to John then, who will be kind of reviewing the basic questions.
So I'll be asking you questions, going through this. You'll be answering to the board, and they can interject at any point, you know, to ask follow-up questions or ask questions at the end. We're one hour on the clock, just to let you know. And so we'll try to get through what we can, you know, on this. So first of all, congratulations.
Thank you.
On being one of three finalists here in Carlisle. And thank you for your interest in Carlisle. Please take a few minutes to tell us about your history and your specific interest in this position, and why do you think you would be successful here? Yeah, I'm sorry. So you have a camera straight in front of you, Ryan? And they're asking that we be a little bit closer to the mic than normal.
Like within six inches.
Forgive me for the awkwardness, then.
Yeah, pull it even closer. Sorry, Ryan. There you go.
Okay, and there's two McLeans too, so M-C-L-A-N-E. Take notes for later. I know Andrew is a great guy, and I'm very honored to be here and to be even among the people that are being considered tonight, so thank you. My name is Ryan McLean. I consider myself a family-first person. First, I live with my family in Dunstable. I have a wife and two kids there. And one of the things that I have really enjoyed in researching Carlisle is the similarities between the two communities. I recognize the challenges and the good parts about living in these towns. Only considering moving from my current position in Hubbardston because of that family. I want to invest the same amount of time that I do in my job and really work hard to be a good advocate for the community while still being able to spend time with my family. So I do that in Hubbardston. I invest myself fully in the community, and the commute, you know, impedes on some time, and sometimes I can take away from my family. But living just down the street, you'll see a lot of me, and I hope that's a good thing. As I said, in Dunstable, I'm a volunteer in my community. I served in the school committee for a while. I'm no longer on the school committee. I was on the cemetery commission because someone has to be on the cemetery commission, and I was going to fill that spot. I also worked on the Government Task Force and am willing to volunteer in minor roles now, given the difficulties of my job and that aforementioned family. I currently work as the Town Administrator in Hubbardston. I've been there for a little over four years now with a one-year break for military service. It's been an honor to work in that community. It's great. Working in a small town is just tremendously rewarding, and my staff is great. Recruited a lot of them personally and have been able to retain them and build the team. And lastly, unless you want to ask questions about the military, I am a volunteer in my community. I coach T-ball and also do some Boy Scouts. So I understand the various things that you also may be involved in. In terms of why I think I would be a good fit for this town, I understand small towns. So I live in one, and I work in one, and this is where I want to be at this point, at this point in my career. I think that being able to provide big-town services in a small town is difficult, and I believe I'm one of the people who really cares about that and understands that. So I serve on several committees for our professional organizations as Town Administrators. And one thing I like to do to bring to the Fiscal Policy Committee or other management committees is bring that perspective of the small town. So we do everything that the big towns do in small towns like this, but we have limited resources, regional schools, some other pressures that cause us to have to be creative and make sure that we're spending every dollar we do efficiently so that we can also provide that same level of service. I really enjoy that about the job, and that's why I like working there. Also, your master plan references Carlisle character. So I recognize this from my work in Hubbardston and my life in Dunstable. People want to live in the town, and they want their town to look and feel like it did when they grew up and in the future, but they also want modern services and service delivery. So I'm the type of person who will look at things like growth, character, and how technology can advance services while still making sure that Carlisle stays Carlisle. Or in my town, Dunstable stays Dunstable, or Hubbardston stays Hubbardston. And I am a strong believer in education. I know that is in every single value and every single goal that you have. Understanding how to pay for that and to value it is something that you need in your Town Administrator, and I will bring that to the position. And lastly, I'm going to be in the community. So I'm gonna have to be at my desk. I'm going to have to do spreadsheets and work. You'll see me in the office. I'll have an open door and people can come in. But I want to get out into the community. I want to go to the Senior Center of Council on Aging and Human Services now. All right. I want to go there and speak with our senior residents. I want to be involved in the schools, working to build that relationship, understanding what our students need, talking to them, making sure that I go to the parks, making sure that if someone complains about a pothole, that I go and see it. I want to be out in the community and doing things. I believe all of those things match the type of things that you're looking for, so I believe that I'm a good fit. So that's me. That's why I'm interested in this community, and I hope you're interested in me. And before I end here, I dropped off some presents. So those documents in front of you, the top two represent the way that I like to communicate to you, the board, and the public, and also how I like to build plans, and we probably will get into these things as you ask questions. And then the second part is, I gave you a entry plan, how I would enter this community as part of my packet, what I like to do in order to understand problems. These are my initial attempts, my first draft before being hired, to try and execute some of that. So I've reviewed a tremendous amount of your reports. You guys have excellent reports and have invested money in things. So here is my first draft at how I would address some parts of your master plan. And secondarily, you have an excellent suite of goals on your website, your Select Board goals. So I took a shot at some of the ways that I would help you address those goals. So I wanted you to see how I communicate, how I like to communicate to the public, and the work that I like to do, if that's a match, then I think I might be a good fit.
I think just briefly, I just mentioned your military career. You've had a 20-year military career, first sergeant and National Guard. I think that's significant. Could you just please address that?
Sure. I joined the military just after 9/11. I've deployed three times. It's made up the bulk of my adult life, serving the global war on terror and deploying, not always intentionally. I didn't volunteer for all of them. I just completed a last tour. We were in Afghanistan until no one was in Afghanistan. And then in Iraq, it was a good capstone to my career. I feel like I'm done with the deployment side, and I'll be finishing up and working on legacy and mentoring as I complete my career.
Great, thank you. How would you work with the board in understanding the vision of the board for the town? And what do you see your role in that process as well as setting a path for implementation?
Okay, so first, I believe that everything starts with goal-setting. I think it's important to create goals and benchmarks and then measurable outcomes for every initiative that we're trying to do. So there's 100 things in your master plan. Saying, coming in front of you right now and saying, "We're gonna do 100 things right off the bat," is, that's not, I'm not honest. I'm just trying to sell you myself there. What we need to do is pick out the things that are going to be the short-term targets, the medium term, and then the long term, and then use that strategic thinking in order to tackle problems. So I would listen, first of all, to all of the stakeholders in this master plan, your current vision, to hear what the priorities are and focus on those short-term things while also trying to help guide boards and committees to think long-term as well. Sometimes you can get a little too caught up in the low-hanging fruit. So based off of your goal-setting, I would use that as my execution roadmap and work to complete those tasks with our staff. Checking in with you regularly so that you know the status, and whether or not we're struggling, we need more resources, or we're being successful and things are completed. Making sure that we're following the things that you want to do. So I see myself as helping to build those goals, providing recommendation based off my experience, and then executing your vision and then reporting back to you on what you would want to accomplish.
What's the difference between leadership and management?
Well, leadership is inspirational. Management is creating priorities and making sure that you execute it. So to me, leadership is, I'm a flat leader. I believe in empowering. In our meeting with the Screening Committee, got to meet a couple of your employees and hear about how employees want to be empowered. And I know that I'm not an expert town clerk. I know that I'm not an expert fire chief. I know that I'm not an expert police chief. What I do know how to do is to get all of those entities to talk and to communicate and to build a plan that will make services in the community better. Bless you. Bless you. So I think leadership is putting the resources and the time and the overall picture into our local leaders and experts' hands and allowing them to execute it. Management is making sure that everybody's accountable for what they said they were gonna do. So I would make sure that everybody committed to goals. I believe that goals should be simple, well, complex, but simple in execution. So I'll give you an example of how I do goals. First, first goal would be a professional development goal. How can I make myself better? Second goal would be, how can I improve the competency of my department? So how can I show the public how competent our department is to build that trust? The third goal would tie to the overall strategic plan or the master plan. And that's it. Three goals. Execute those goals. Have a good year. And the management part of that is making sure we do it.
What type of work culture do you hope to create and foster in Town Hall? And how would you go about accomplishing that?
So I'm sure you know this. The current job market is putting a strain on municipal government. There is an inability to retain employees anywhere, private sector, public sector, et cetera. So the first thing that I would want to institute, and I know that it's already here, and I should really say I want to build on it, is building a culture where people want to work. I believe you do that by giving people a reason to come to work and then making sure that their work is valuable. So you have conversations with them about what their work is, what it means to them, and make sure that the tasks you're giving them are tied to those feelings. So you have that overall sense of purpose. And then after you have that exercise, you also need to get the day-to-day done. You also need to get the vision done, and we also need to execute the will of our boards and committees. So how can we do that work? How can we make it efficient? How can I give you the resources to accomplish your goal? If you do that and then support the employee and make sure that you're listening to the things that they need, I believe that they can buy into the overall picture and then produce a product that you would enjoy. Does it work with everybody? No. Have I had 100% success with that? No. But overall, driving in that direction, you tend to retain the people you want to retain and move on from the people that you don't.
So being that this is a Town Administrator's position, not a Town Manager's position, how do you work in the dotted-line scenario where you have more dotted-line employees than you do solid-line employees?
Okay, so forgive me a second. I thought you might ask something like this, and I was practicing with my daughter. So she was...
Dotted-line relationships.
Yeah, she's much, my family's super nerds. She's an auditor, my wife, so not a lot of fun in the McLean household. So she's sitting where you are, much more intimidating, and she asked me, you know, something along those lines, not the dotted line, I won't lie. So I gave her an answer, and she said, "Daddy, that's the most boring thing I've ever heard in my life." So I'm hoping you don't think my answer's boring. In Hubbardston, it just made me laugh thinking about that. In Hubbardston, I have a very strong charter. I have the ability to sign warrants. I have the ability to appoint all but three positions. On paper, I have a ton of authority, especially for a small town, a town of under 5,000. But it doesn't matter. What I've learned is, if you don't have buy-in from your boards and committees, if you don't have buy-in from the public, if you don't have buy-in to build your budgets, then it doesn't matter. So despite all the power that I have in the charter, I still have to build consensus. I still have to build the team, and I still have to go around and make sure that everybody is part of a vision and supports it. Otherwise, someone's gonna stand up at a town meeting and say, "That's nice. We vote to amend your budget and move on." Right? So I can appoint anybody I want, but if I don't have support with it, it doesn't matter. So I know that this isn't a Town Manager position. I also know that, that on paper, it's a weaker position than, say, that I have in Hubbardston, but I don't see it as any different. I wouldn't act any different than I do now, except that I would make sure that I package information to you so that you can make the decisions that I might have been able to make and then would have to tell you anyway. It's not that different. I also know that you're currently working with a Government Task Force to understand these relationships, what you want to be, what Carlisle is gonna look like in 2030. I'm doing that in the town of Dunstable and are did on the Government Study Committee. We went from having the strongest charter ever, and we're gonna bring this to the public, to we're gonna do it by law, to I don't know if we're gonna do anything, right? We're having the same conversations, and every town should. You shouldn't just put power in someone's hands because other towns are doing it. You should think about what you want to do as a community and execute that. So I really do think I'm the right person to help you if you want to move towards a stronger role. If you don't want to move towards a stronger role, then I will show you that I can support that way as well. Whatever way we go, I'm a public servant, and I'm here to serve.
So with this type of organization, how do you set the conditions to have a high-morale organization where people, you know, have many reporting structures that includes various boards?
So I think, I'll use an example. I think you do that by making sure that everybody understands the responsibilities, the reporting, et cetera. So when I came into the position in Hubbardston, we had a Board of Health who had a part-time clerk. We had a Planning Board who had a part-time clerk. We had an Assessor who had a part-time clerk, part-time clerk, part-time clerk, part-time clerk. These are eight-to-12-hour positions that people wanted sometimes, and sometimes we couldn't fill them. But the boards were used to that type of structure, and they were used to that person reporting directly to them. So instead of coming in and saying, "No, no, no. The Charter says that I'm in charge of that person." We had a conversation about, where do you want this position to go? What do you need for resources? Where do you need help in getting better? And we created positions, full-time positions, out of those smaller positions that allowed our employees to feel like they were supported financially, that they were supported in their work, and they wanted to stay. Now, that took a lot of work on the boards and committee side because we had to share that time. So I continually went back to those boards and committees to make sure that they were understanding what I pictured for the position, what the employee wanted, because sometimes it would come to me, sometimes it would go to them, and what the boards wanted to do. That communication is vital. It's never gonna be perfect. Everybody has different wants and desires, but if you talk about it and you figure it out and you continue to try things, you can accomplish it in these small towns where you need every employee functional in order to be good at what you do.
So as we discussed in the screening round, the person appointed here will have the opportunity to develop the first Assistant Town Administrator position in Carlisle. What skills would you seek for the position, and how should they complement your skills?
One of the questions my daughter made fun of me for. So the Assistant Town... So you brought this up, and I've been thinking about it since the Screening Committee. First caveat is, I would want to know the strengths and weaknesses of the candidate that we end up hiring for an Assistant Town Administrator because we want to make sure that person is successful right away. So if they lean towards having a planning background, or if they lean towards having a budgeting background or an HR background, then I would first start that position where they're strong and then build to make sure that these, I'm mentoring them to come to a full understanding of the town. But I think the Assistant Town Administrator should have three focuses. First, your master plan, and what I identify as one of your things to work on here in Carlisle is the cohesion of all of your planning currently in silos, coming together into one so that the boards can communicate and have a shared vision. So I would make the Assistant Town Administrator the node for this communication. What I mean by that is a monthly or semi-monthly touch point with each board and committee to get some feedback on what they're working on, create some type of report, whether formal or informal, and then share that amongst all the boards and committees so that at least everyone can see what everyone's working on. Hopefully, you can identify some efficiencies, some shared understanding, and then some places where people are being redundant. This would allow the Assistant Town Administrator to understand the full picture first, and then also there would be a person dedicated in Town Hall for all people to communicate with. This would be a start, and then that assistant would feed me the information so that we can provide resources to all the boards and committees. The second thing I would have the Assistant Town Administrator work on is HR function. So HR function is definitely a need here in Carlisle, as it is in all small towns. So HR, and I don't mean discipline, and I don't mean goal-setting. What I mean is compliance, training, and making sure that employees are met with their benefits and everything that they're supposed to get with their service here so that the Assistant Town Administrator can be someone that people can come to before they come to you or me, the appointing authorities. Then the third thing I would want the Assistant Town Administrator to work on is these things that you identify in your master plan as the caring community. So what I mean by that is going and talking with seniors to make sure that we're hearing them what I would call a four-generation approach to listening. So the kids, those transitioning to adulthood, those who are in their family years, and then our seniors, getting feedback from all of those partners so that that is constantly being fed into our services at Town Hall, and everything that we're doing and producing is affected by that. What I mean by that is, let's say the DPW is engaged in plowing, but there is a concern with certain elderly neighborhood or residents. We can feed that information through the Assistant Town Administrator to the DPW and have extra time or extra support done there so that that resident feels like we're taking care of that specific need. Allowing the Assistant Town Administrator to serve as that type of node allows us another sensor in the community to make sure that we're responding to everybody. And then lastly, I do believe that Carlisle needs a social media presence or some type of communication tool that's online, and the Assistant Town Administrator would also serve in that role, making sure that everybody was being communicated with, whether it's on paper, email, making sure the website's updated, and then social media, as I mentioned before.
Okay, one, just take a second. We're not coming down. They're broken. Okay, so we'll just have to, there it goes. All right, thank you.
God, I can see you guys.
Yeah, absolutely. So I have a follow-up question to that one. And so, you know, first of all, yeah, great answer to that question. It showed that you really thought a lot about what our needs are and what types of tasks you might assign to somebody else. Looking at that question from a slightly different perspective of, you know, in hiring an Assistant Town Administrator, one of the things you can do is you can augment skills in a different ways. And so if you think about you as the Town Administrator, what skills might you look for in an Assistant Town Administrator to kind of complement yours?
So again, I would look for, thank you, I would look for a planning or an HR background so that that portion of the position would be taken off my plate so I could focus on the... And it doesn't, I can go either way. That's fine. I also want to make sure that the Assistant Town Administrator is a communicator. So the way that you build yourself into this role in a successful way is what I think is being able to talk to people empathetically, understanding them, not commanding. You want to make sure that you're a listener and then an executor of tasks. So I would want a strong communication skill set from the Assistant Administrator. But the specific example is planning experience or HR experience. I think that immediately benefits the town, given your master plan.
Okay, thank you. So let's move to finance then. So describe your past role in financial planning, including developing the budget, capital improvement plans, and ensuring financial sustainability.
Okay, so...
You do know that you included, didn't you? That was one of your work samples, wasn't it? Am I getting that right?
Yes, the, so the idea of capital planning was a part of Hubbardston's mix, but I believe that I took it to the next level. And it's funny, reading through your materials, one of the things that was missing from the capital plan, everybody's good at putting stuff into the capital plan, right? Everyone gets a truck and their cruiser, and that shows up every year. But the things you need to think about, especially in a small town with limited Chapter 90 resources, is your culverts, your roads, and your facilities, which every town has a problem with those three things because you're gonna have your advocates for the truck at the town meeting, and you're not gonna have your advocate for the eco-friendly culvert that someone really needs to improve the drainage in their yard. So including all of that into the capital plan, and then we, I rewrote with the Finance Committee and our finance team all of our financial policies based off DOR best practices, and then educated our Finance Committee and our Select Board on those best practices so we could start to build the reserves that allowed a small town like Hubbardston to spend money on things like roads. So a common complaint I was getting was, "Well, we don't have the money to fix the roads outside of the Chapter 90 allocation." Okay, well, we build that by creating and generating free cash, addressing these things in a long-term focus, and then investing, when those monies came available, into that work, showing the community that that's something that can function, and then the community might support additional resources, if necessary, to focus on those things. Also showing the boards and committees, by spending money here, we're not gonna be able to spend money there. That was a very powerful tool to bring to the Finance Committee and the Select Board is, yes, this is a great idea, and so is this, and you can't have both. Which one do you, which one do you want to do, and make sure you prioritize it so it makes sense? And when you go to town meeting with that type of planning and knowledge, then, you know, no one's gonna be happy with the entire plan, but people could understand the math. So then, the last thing here with transparent reporting is to put that plan in a digestible manner online and allow people to see it and have a public meeting where you go over it so people can comment. Call it a hearing or whatever you want to call it to bring people to the event and say, "This is what we're thinking. Do you have any issues with this? What would you add to it? What's missing?" That makes people feel a part of it. So finances, I can talk about each piece if you want, but overall, you need to combine all of it into one picture in order for it, in order for it to make sense. If you don't have the reserves, if you don't have the plan, then you can't get the bond rating, and you can't borrow so that you can do more products and fix more things. And this one should go first because it opens up financial capacity for this to happen. Like we're using our upper funds to pave a road right now and people said, well, why that road? How many, how many houses are on that road? They wanted to get into the details of it. Well, paving that road took it off the capital plan, allowed for two years of chapter ninety paving, which is another six, seven miles of road, and made sure that we didn't have to bond, which allows us to do the facilities upgrade using a bond. Okay, that makes sense, or at least you use words that convinced me that that made sense, right? So that, that is my financial focus. It's not to make your decisions. It's to present it in a way that, that you can make the decisions and then we can figure it out.
Grantsmanship.
Let's say that again.
Grantsmanship.
Yes. Grantsmanship.
Yeah, grants will have, you know, what, what type of role have you played in getting grants?
Oh, okay. So.
Sorry.
Sorry, I didn't know the word. So I'm the grant writer in the town of Hubbardston. We have been able to secure community compact grants and work with our regional, with our regional provider in order to get, we did MVP, we did green communities. We worked on D O R, D O E R grants, which we were not successful in, but we were able to pull that into the capital plan. We also did tip planning for our roads and I was a part of that, working with our engineers. And I'm not an engineer, so my expertise is to work with those entities to make sure that it happens and to to build those funds so that, again, you can cut into the capital plan and do more with things like the monies that you actually control, which is free cash. So I've written the grants. I'm familiar with every single grant that Massachusetts has and also currently working on federal grants for our building infrastructure problem, forty-year low-interest borrowing and other grants that will allow us to do the big things and make sure the taxes stay as low as we can keep them.
Moving to personnel and HR today, what are some of the key issues and needs that you want to address?
So to specific to Carlisle, you mentioned one of them already and that's making sure that everybody understands the reporting structure, that there is an HR portal on the website so that people can understand benefits, the task organization, things like the compensation and wage plan, that information should be accessible. That proves to the employee that you've thought these processes through, that you've invested the time to make sure they understand what employee supports are in place and they can comment on it and bring us real information. Also think the idea of sustaining employees is really important. You, Carlisle has done a decent job of sustaining. In central Mass, we have a total revolving door. And that's not because of anything we're doing. It's just that this community is, it will pay just a little bit more than that community. You'll pay it just to keep people doing, how many assistant assessors are there? You know, there just isn't that many. So creating positions that are known and when necessary, and I'm not, even though I've done a lot of it, I'm not, I'm not set on regionalizing, but at least looking for things like regionalization. And one specific area that you talk about in your master plan is planning. I think planning is completely ripe for a regionalization. Maybe not a full-time planner working for the town of Carlisle, but one that helps the town of Carlisle in a cost-efficient way. And the last focus is, is making sure that employees understand the big picture and communicating with them. So everything that I wrote that I'm going to communicate with you, I also communicate with the employees. So after a select board meeting, I send an email to all the employees and then go talk to them about it, about what is going on in the town and how does that fit into the big picture? So one of the things my employees told me when I got back is, oh, we can hear again the bigger picture because you are talking about these things. There's no secrets with me. It's, here's why we're doing what we're doing and here's how things fit into the bigger picture. Here's why we're asking you to do this. So that goal-based empowerment, that ability to see your benefits and where you're going and creating jobs that are sustainable, I think are the biggest focuses right now for me in HR and also applicable here in Carlisle.
How would you address an onboarding program for new employees across all municipal departments?
Onboarding. So when I came to the town of Hubbardston, and I, I don't have many bad things to say about the town of Hubbardston, but I didn't have a computer, I didn't have, I worked with the treasurer who's great. I have one of the best treasurers to understand the benefits package. There was no onboarding. And I thought to myself immediately, well, if the town administrator isn't getting the onboarding, then that means nobody is. So what I did was I built a checklist for new hires. This checklist says everything that a new hire needs, whether it's passwords and door codes to emails, to making sure that they have keys and they know who everybody is and you go on a tour. So we built our own onboarding process. And I would say we're effective seventy-five percent of the time with it. When a new employee comes in, like everyone else, we're so busy that, that sometimes we do it really well and sometimes we don't, but we try. And I have them carry around that checklist and we say for two or three days, this is what you're doing. And the good ones are like, I'm done after four hours. I want to get to work and that's great. But we want to make sure that they feel heard. We're also currently exploring, and this is at its infancy, so I'm hesitant to say exploring, but the Quavon Regional School District, which is a five-town district, forty million dollar budget, same budget as all five towns in Quavon combined. They have a robust human resources as any entity that size would. So how can we explore sharing human resources with them? So I don't think that discipline and goal setting is, is part of that. I think what we need is onboarding, connection to benefits, making sure that payroll is set up with the treasurer. That type of regionalization can be done pretty efficiently and would improve the employee experience a lot. So onboarding is something I think about all the time. You set that tone with the employee and make sure, and I don't know the onboarding process here. Hopefully I get to see it soon and I'll let you know whether or not we need to fix it.
Optimism. Okay, so scenario for you. If you're responsible for making sure that all department heads completed a specific task and one department head refused due to lack of time, how would you handle that?
If you refused to, due to lack of time.
Refuse to, to complete the task due to lack of time, they said.
So first I would meet with that employee and we would talk about why they didn't have enough time. So I would want to give the employee the benefit of the doubt and say, explain to me why you're so time, time-strained right now. And if the answer was legitimate, then we would consider talking about whether or not we need to support that employee with more resources. And if it wasn't legitimate, we would talk about a performance improvement plan and not the formal type where you're really starting to discipline someone. But hey, here is a course on time management that you can take. Here's an investment we're going to make in you so that you can get better at this. Once those avenues were taken, then we would go down a different route. If you were just being obstinate or underperforming, then we're going to put you on the formal performance improvement plan and then talk about whether or not you're, you're a fit. But I almost never get there. I want to talk about professional development. I want to talk about why you're not meeting the standard that you're meeting. And sometimes it's because like, hey, Ryan, I didn't like the project you gave me and I didn't want to tell you and I just didn't do it, right? So that's a conversation about, okay, how can we communicate better so that you're getting that task? Here's where the task comes from and why you should think it's important. So talk, talk, talk. It's always talk and you need to communicate with your employees.
How would you do, do that? That's a great answer. How would you do that in an environment where the person kind of technically reports to a board and not to this role?
It's a good question. So I do that now. So on, under charter, I have the authority over everyone but the library and the two police, the police chief and the fire chief. So what I did with the police chief and the fire chief is I leveraged my paramilitary understanding and understanding of that community and said, listen, here are the goals. I am trying to get you the resources so that you can be very good. I want to add officers and shift hours. I want to make sure your employees are taken care of. I want to make sure you have the cruisers you need to get your job done. Same with fire. I am your liaison to the board. They're in charge of you, but they're going to listen to my recommendations. So I spent years trying to prove to them that if they worked with me, I would get them the resources they need. And I think, and you can ask them, call them, I think we were able to do that. So I'm not someone who's trying to take resources from you. I'm trying to make sure that we compare all the departments correctly, all the workloads correctly and you're doing the thing that you're doing. Same thing with the library. The library is controlled by the library board of trustees. I met with that board and we talked about shared understanding and goals for the employees so that we all knew what we were doing with that employee. And sometimes they had a different vision than me or the, the select board and we talked about it. And seventy-five percent of the time we were successful, so being honest with my numbers.
Just for the board, I'm skipping some questions here and there for time purposes and if we can, we'll come back to them. Please discuss how you would increase communications, both internally and externally, including any use of technology and new communication methods.
Okay, so I built a communication plan for you because I wanted you to see this. It's easy to say I would talk more. So here's specifically how I would do it. So internally, you would get an update from me weekly, the board and specifically, here's what we worked on. Here's the things you should know about and includes both short-term and long-term. Here's what happened this week and here's the things that you should know about coming up. And then before a meeting, you would get a whole section on, here's everything in the meeting, things you asked me to look for, things I think you should know, things the staff needs to know. And then the department heads and other employees would get the same thing, but in reverse. So after the meeting, they would get a summary of the meeting and everything that's going on. Plus, we would do priorities and then information email weekly so that everybody knows everything that's going on. So internal communication is a lot of email. And then what I like to do is I send the email and then I go and I talk to all the employees and make sure they understand and have any questions or that everything got communicated correctly. Externally, this is how I communicate to the public. So a lot of the same information that I give to you, I would package in an information to the public could see it as well. Because they should see all the things that I'm working on and the staff is working on. Hopefully with the assistant town administrator and my vision for it, we would have an all-boards report or some type of newsletter so that everybody can see that, both internally and externally. And then social media and these, what I call transparent reportings, or all these reports would be available online in a very prominent place so that everybody can see and engage. So if you picture the capital plan, you would have a full capital plan with all the detail for people like me who just dive in and nerd out, right? And then you'll have an infographic for people who are just like, I just want to know the bottom line, the people that flip to the back of the thing and say, how much does it cost? We'd have an infographic so they can just look at that. So each report has the detail and the accessibility. And then lastly, non-standard communication. You have a great newspaper in town, the mosquito, the skeeter, I think it's called. It was a really cool name. I think that if they were willing to let me write articles in that or our staff to write.
We got a problem, but we're going to keep going here. So if you get it back up, let us know. Sorry, but let's just keep, you know, going for the board purposes.
You're not going to surprise me then. Yeah, we didn't have all this when I got to Hubbardston.
All right, so you were.
Talking about, talking about the skeeter, right? Ways to reach people, anything that we put on the internet, we'll also put in the council on aging in the library so people can access it non-digitally, because I think that's important. And then the town website, although I'm not here to tell you what you do good or bad, your town website needs to be more of a resource. So the town website is a twenty-four-seven portal for residents to get information and access. And I would work very diligently to make it a little bit more robust. That's as nice as I can say that, a little bit more robust. And then I believe in, I'm not like one to look like a mayor and say, you know, here's the weekly town report on a YouTube. But I do think Citizen Academy's lectures, which is one of the things that was identified in your master plan and other talks in town so that people can become educated about local government and volunteering are good communication tools. And then they also recruit people to come in and help out.
So let's just talk about, I'm sorry.
Just a quick follow-up on that. So it sounds like, I mean, it all sounds really great and a lot of, you know, good communication. You don't mention sort of internal staff meetings or department head meetings, which it's more than, you know, a weekly newsletter or individual face-to-face, but, you know, organized meetings with your staff or department head. So what, how would you approach that?
So one of your, thank you, one of your select board goals touched on this, engagement with employees. And I, I know that meant you with employees, but it's very similar to how I do it. So I believe that you should have staff meetings, but not just have staff meetings, okay? So whatever frequency makes sense and I'd want to assess the town before I tell you and lie to you that I'm going to do it every week or every month. I want to know the staff first and their tempo before I commit. But there would be at least a quarterly, if not monthly, professional development and understanding the big picture. And usually you work around important dates like town meeting, budget and all those things that people are communicating. I also believe that every once in a while, you should close town hall and go out and visit something in town like, like the baseball fields or go to the schools or the church and have an outing where you see the good that you've been doing by providing services to the town and maybe look at things that need to be improved and why we're so focused on it. And then talk about important things like the trainings that we need to get done, so a non-standard way of talking. And then I am very focused on talking to my employees. So I do send emails and I like to do that because I think people can reference them later and that's an important tool. But I will, and my employees will tell you, I go and I talk to everyone. I touch every employee every week with a, with a talk about how you're doing. And sometimes that's a, tell me about what happened with your grandkids or, or tell me about the event that was exciting you to, okay, this is, this is what we need to get done this week for town meeting and this is a follow-up to something that you sent me or a priority that we need to do. So sometimes it's just a casual, making sure that I'm connected with them and seeing how they're doing. And sometimes it's a more formal, all right, let's sit down and talk about this. But I almost never say, come to my office and sit in the chair. I, I don't believe that's effective. I think people hate it. And just that text, like, come see me, right? I don't do that because that just freaks people out. So I'll go to them and I'm fine doing that.
So generally and with some specific examples, you know, how do you engage citizens?
So I think that's really important because sometimes I create these plans and you'll see, if I'm hired on the whiteboard, it'll be all these plans and stuff. And, and you plan it out and it sounds great and municipally it would play well, really well when you're getting your MPA. And then you go out and you talk to the community and they're like, that doesn't make sense. Or Ryan, that's dumb. You know, they say, they tell you something and that gives you a little hint as to how you either need to package the information or, or change the delivery or even change the content. So I think this is really important. You do that by going to events and making time not to just go and do a speech and then leave or, or do the things. But you go and you actually talk to people and you see what they're thinking. You go and have coffee hours, even if no one shows up at the council on aging or for lunch or at the library. And you go to trainings like the police training or other trainings that the people are having for the community. You do these things so that people know that you're accessible and then you have an open door as well. So I'm never too busy for anybody, even though I definitely am. I'm never too busy for anybody. We keep the door open and we talk and sometimes that means I got to do work later at night, but that's fine. Because I'd rather communicate with people than write my reports. So that community engagement is vital. I've given you a couple of ways that I would do that, whether it's online or in person. But I know how to do that.
So how do you resolve conflicts and disputes, you know, with folks?
You mean between me and them or between them?
Let's take the between them. So, you know, happens all the time within staff or boards and so on. How do you, how do you address that?
So I'm going to start by a mistake that I made. So there was a conflict between a department and I listened to something and it made me, made me like, no, we can't do that. And I went to that person and said this and then found out the story was the exact opposite of what I thought it was and I made it, I made it worse, right? And that's something I did early in my time in Hubbardston and I learned a ton from that. So no matter what you think about the initial thing you hear, you need to go talk to both sides and slow everything down. So some people want that instant action and honestly, the public can sometimes get mad at you because you're not instantly acting, but I don't do that. So you take the time, you take the time, you understand the problem fully and then you sit in a room and you go over the problem to make sure that everybody understands what the actual problem is and then you evaluate courses of action. So that's, I mean, that sounds, I got that right from the military, but I also think it's really applicable here in the civilian world. The idea of understanding the problem and then sitting down and talking about it, communicating and then coming up with a plan. That doesn't mean everybody's going to agree, but at least everybody was heard and everybody understands that we're talking about the same thing. And I use the same with anyone who has conflict with me, so let's talk it out. I don't let things fester at all, at all. If there's an issue, we go and we deal with it immediately and make sure that we're keeping that morale up.
More than two sides to every story.
Yes, like seven usually.
So you, you mentioned earlier about the importance of schools here, you know, in Carlisle and your thoughts on that. How would you develop and manage a relationship with the, the schools between the, the local and the regional?
So I've done this twice. First, I'd want to assess your relationship with, with your schools in Carlisle. I'm not on the inside, so I don't, I don't know. But on the school committee, I also spoke municipal, believe it or not. So I was able to bridge the gap between the town governments and the school and talk about specifics like finance, excess levy capacity, all the things. Also served on the, the union side so I could understand it from the teacher level. So I know on the school side of budgeting and management and I know on the town side of budgeting, and I know that they're very different, but, but have to work together. So I tried very hard when I was on the school committee to be that resource to, to connect the two. And we were able to have long-term expenditure discussions, build capital plans that made sense or things that, that you're used to hearing on the municipal side of the government. We were able to connect the two. So that's one, but it's a lot different when you're in the town administrator seat, which I did at the Quavon Regional School District. So you have two towns here, try five. We had five in the Quavon Regional School District, all wonderful towns, two of them without a chief executive, just volunteer boards. Three of them with a chief executive and one of them that was just recently hired. And a, you know, a very capable and strong superintendent and, and school business director, director of operations. Every time, every year, the select board said our goal is to increase, increase the relationship, increase the ability to talk to schools and make sure. So we did that. I would go to the schools by myself in early part of the year and say, here's where we're at. Here's our financial forecast. Here's what we're looking at. Here are some issues. COVID was a great example. Here's, here's the issues we're having in town. And we talked. And even though things got contentious in many, in many cases, because of limited resources and budgeting, we're still able to talk and come through. And I can prove that because we're talking about shared services like custodial services. We're talking about sharing IT. We're talking about sharing the things that the, the schools can do that can help municipal, even, even when there are sometimes budget fights. So I mean it when I say that I'm, I'm pro education. Um, I want to understand it is, I also understand that, you know, limited resources for everybody and not everyone's going to get what they want. So I can, I can manage both uh, the love and the reality of, of what needs to be accomplished.
All right, let's uh, let's move on to these folks. Um, describe the overall relationship that you envision for working with the select board.
Oh, okay, that's intimidating. Uh, I'm just kidding. So um, I see myself as, as your agent in town, the connection between you and the staff. So I, I will build or try to build a cohesive team and then communicate their needs to you. And then your overall vision to them so that it's a symbiotic relationship that makes sense. I will ask each one of you specifically, do you prefer to communicate with me by text? Do you need a phone call? Do you want an email? Do you need me to come and meet you in town and, and talk about something? Whatever you choose, we will do because I want to make sure you're informed and, and have the ability to make the right decision. When I say I want you to look good in public, it's not because I'm always going to agree with everything that you say or do, but it's because I want everyone to appear professional so that the overall belief in the town here in Carlisle is that even though we may disagree, everybody's growing in the same direction and trying to make the town better. So my relationship with you is built on that, is mutual respect. I respect everybody who volunteers for their community. I will respect your time and how you want to be communicated with. And I'll be honest, we won't always agree, but when we don't, I promise you that we'll talk it out and I'll tell you the truth and what I feel. And then when we get in front of the public, I will execute the will of the board per the, per the direction of the town. They, they picked you to lead it, so I will help you. That's how I choose to have a relationship with the board. It's been effective. And um, I, I actually enjoy it. Finance committee too, all the other committees that we need to work with. It's, it's not just a select board.
I have a quick follow-up there. So um, Ryan, uh, so our select board meetings, um, the town administrator, um, you know, sits with us here at the table. And um, I think we look to the, the town administrator in, in those public sessions to offer um, his or her opinion. And I'm just interested in how you see your role in that public setting.
So I believe it's a, it's a very interesting question. So the, I believe my role is to provide the expertise of, of municipal government if I can. And if I don't know the answer, I will tell you, I'm not going to make it up. And then to bring the knowledge of the staff and support the staff and what they're bringing. And then my knowledge of all the other boards who are trying to liaison with you and that we've been liaising with as a staff to the problem set. And I will give recommendations if asked, what do you believe about this? And I'll, I will give you that opinion. It'll be professionally based and it, and it'll, it'll stick strictly to the, the topics that we're discussing about it. And you'll already know what I believe because you'll have gotten information about that topic in an email prior and an invitation for me to talk about it individually, um, if, if you want to understand where I'm coming from. So I don't believe in surprises. I'm never going to give you a surprise recommendation out of nowhere. You'll know ahead of time uh, what I think unless it's something completely new that we need to talk about and we'll assess it as it comes. If you look at my interaction with, with my board, I serve in a very similar role. So select board runs, runs a meeting and then looks to me to provide some insight or, or overall comment on what's going on, the process, the policy to make sure everything's being done right. And if necessary, a recommendation from the staff and it works well. Um, and they know I'm coming from a place of this is my job and I'm here to support you. And not that I, you know, have any, any interest in seeing anything but the town improve.
So down to just about 10 minutes, um, you know, on the schedule. So let's see, if time flies when you're on that side.
It's not hot in here.
So um, you submitted a, a work sample uh, to um, uh, to uh, the board. Um, just give us a brief, uh, you did slightly earlier, but just give us a brief review of how you developed this document and what it is.
So this document, the capital plan is something that we, we built from scratch. So what I did with the Capital Improvement Planning Committee is I worked with the Finance Committee and the Select Board to get the overall goals for the capital planning process. Got the Select Board to inform the Capital Improvement Planning Committee of what they wanted to, to see out of their recommendation because they're an agent of the Select Board. And then got to work with the Capital Improvement Planning Committee to talk about all of the things we need to talk about, whether that be municipal building recommendations or the current year, how the last year went and then five years down the road. So we talked it out. We met with department heads. I brought in um, other, other staff members if necessary to explain the different things that the Capital Improvement Planning Committee wanted more information on. And then um, had them build the consensus. So I served as the mediator between their conversation. Uh, they made the decisions and talked about things and I helped provide them direction and then information when necessary. So then I drafted this document for them based off the conversation and I sent it to each member for their review. And then we reviewed it in public so that they could comment on, on its efficacy. And once that was complete, we published it. And then I helped them build a presentation to give the Select Board so that they could present their recommendations to the board. Then we made this public and very public. So it went out by email, it went out by social media and it went to anybody who asked for it. Uh, we also printed some copies so that people could see it if they wanted to see it. Don't always get a ton of takers for that type of thing, but we want to make sure that it's available. And we do know it was viewed online because we can see those statistics. So um, I think it demonstrates my goal-based leadership and approach. I think it demonstrates my um, comprehensiveness in terms of research. I also think it represents the way I like to build consensus and then put out a, a product that is digestible and people can understand. You can picture on top of that a infographic saying here is FY, uh, here's what FY 23. Here are some recommendations and here's how this was done so that people can understand it at a top-line level.
Questions from the board as to the work product?
I have a different question.
Yeah.
Yeah, so um, other question. Yes, we do. Yep. So we'll move to other questions from the board.
Alright, so I'm sorry and I might have missed in your opening remarks, but um, sorry, okay.
Yes.
Need to speak, are we on the web? We're back on, okay. So you're a young guy, pretty accomplished. Um, you're four years into, uh, you know, an assignment at Hubbard, which is not, it's a little smaller than us. It's a lot more financially constrained, I guess, from what I'm looking at their budget. But I mean, how does this, how would this job fit in your long-term career goals? I mean, we're, I don't, I don't want to speak for others, but I don't think we're looking for a lifetime assignment here, but we certainly would want some tenure. Uh, so I'm curious about what, what would motivate you to move from the job you're in and how this would fit in those, you know, that plan and that you have.
Perfectly reasonable question. So the, the main reasons for leaving is um, I have a very small list of towns that, that I would be willing to go to. And I'm not, I'm being honest when I say I, I'm a small town, at these, this point in my life, a small town focus. And I'm not interested in, in some of the bigger towns that, that you see. The reason why I would move from, I love working in Hubbard. I think it's great. It's been the opportunity of a lifetime. It just, it takes me a long time to get there and that's about as candid as I can be. Um, I have to leave at four and rush to get home to, to coach T-ball with my son, which is also a priority for me. And then I log back in and I work. Um, if I could get that hour of my life back, then you know, I think all of us would pay a lot of money for it. And my staff knows that, you know, that, that is the, the main driver. But I also want to be in a community where I'm a good fit and I think I'm a good fit for this community. I think I think about things the same way that you do. I think about, um, I think you have the type of staff model that I'm used to leading and the type of budget that I, that I can approach and with confidence and give you strong recommendations for. So no, I don't expect to spend my whole life in Carlisle, but I'm not looking to jump around. I'm not looking to say, you know, these are the next towns I'm going to. I want to come into this community, execute my entry plan, provide you with a report of what I think after six months of, of reviewing the town and then get to work doing that um, for as, for as long as you, you want to keep me. Because it is a two-way thing, so.
Where do you live?
The other side of Westford.
Yep.
Travis?
Well, I was going to say to follow up on that, um, so you know, thinking about your tenure, if you were here, when you look back on it, what, what do you want to be most proud of?
Looking at, I mean, your master plan is, is gorgeous. So um, I would like to translate this document, this Carlisle Ford document into actual action. And I would like to give the town uh, some under, more, a deeper understanding of what the town administrator can bring in terms of collaboration and also mentor that Assistant Town Administrator position in, if, if that's what we're going to hire. I think those would be two strong successes. And I, I also think, and we've talked about it, communication, um, online presence and other things can improve. And I love the idea, the challenge of Carlisle is going from 18% 65 plus to 28% 65 plus by 2035. And Carlisle wants to stay exactly the same and Carlisle values its education. That is a tremendous problem set for a town administrator because all of those things compete for resources. So can I bring my expertise and knowledge to bear on a community that wants to accomplish these things? Um, I think so. And if I do, I'm going to be pretty proud of it. And I think we'll look back and say we accomplished a lot together. So those are why I'm applying here and, and you can't know this, you just have to believe me. But I'm not, I'm not shotgun applying to different places to try and find another job. Uh, John could tell you how back and forth we went about uh, making sure that things were fit. And I'm, I'm really focused on finding a place that, that I can be effective. Whatever comes 10 years from now is, you know, who can know? So I didn't think I was going to be deployed last year either, so life happens.
Anybody else?
I, I have a, I have two questions. Um, one is, one is kind of an interest question. You know, first of all, thank you very much for your service and thank you for, you have three deployments. Um, thank you.
It's too many.
Yeah, I know. Um, what does HHB mean?
Headquarters and Headquarters Battery.
Okay, thank you.
So you have a Headquarters Battery, that's all the people. And then the Headquarters is like the top boss and his staff. So it's Headquarters and Headquarters Battery. So like everything in the military, they make it obnoxious. So nobody understands.
Okay.
Just explain for Saj, uh, so everybody understands what's, what's your position as a senior NCO in that organization?
So I know that none of them will be watching this, so I can say this. My role is the opposite in the military. So a commander is in charge of a battery. In my case, it's 170 plus, sometimes 250 if you include certain people. I am the commander's uh, right-hand arm, the connection to the enlisted side of the house. So I'm not in the policy side of it, I'm in the execution side, whereas it's the opposite here. So I think that actually helps me understand the two jobs. And most people in the military are surprised that I'm on this side of the table, which is good. I think that's a compliment. So I am in charge of the morale, welfare, training and execution of 250 soldiers' lives. And um, man, do they think I'm old. So it's, it's extremely interesting. Uh, you call me a young man, I'm in the military, I'm ancient. So it's uh, I was the oldest person in our unit when we were forward deployed. So uh, daily getting very interesting, intelligent, smart, 20-year-old people coming to me and being like, well, you're my, you know, parents or even grandparents age, tell me about the future. Oh, man, that's intimidating. That's what the military is like for me.
Okay, great, thank you. One other question, um, you, you said, um, when we were talking about personnel, that, you know, there's quite a bit of turnover um, in the town that you're in now, you have kind of competition between this, the towns. We've been very fortunate in that people tend to stay here for a very long time. And so the, the issue that we're facing is um, succession planning. And how might you go about that?
So I don't think the two are different in terms of succession planning. So I build a lot of, and we haven't had a lot of turnover, I should be clear, in Hubbard, just the area. But I think we're going to start facing it just because everybody is. And fortunately, I think Carlisle is going to as well. The idea of succession planning, it doesn't matter if you age out or retire or if you're just moving on to, to a different, different position. So what I've done to address it is, is to build quality positions that people want to fill. So we have one of the best land use coordinators, I think, in central Massachusetts who decided to move on recently. And that position, because we built it the way it's built, should be able to attract somebody because of its, its salary and its focus. So understanding that was the result of succession planning. So can we replace the part-time clerk? Sure. Is it going to be easy? No. Is there a large pool of candidates? No. But can we replace a land use coordinator? An interesting job that, um, that people will want and that can come from different communities, yes. So we built that into our succession plan. We also need to make sure that we aren't so reliant, like most small towns are, on one person. That when that one person, like the whole house of cards comes down. So I've been working on, okay, if this person leaves, what does that look like? And you know, we're going to lose a police chief to retirement. Um, I have very, a bunch of talented staff members that could choose to go somewhere else because people want them. Uh, how do we do that? And sometimes we build a regionalization that allows them to grow. Or um, I have to build unfortunately the plan to replace them. And I think it's the same thing.
Thank you very much.
So we are at our time, but we're here at your pleasure. So unless the board wants to move forward, um, I can um, ask Ryan for his closing statement at this point.
Please.
Okay, Ryan, closing statement.
Okay, everybody wants to continue to hear my voice. So the um, the thing I would like to say is that, that I applied to this position, as I've said a couple of times now, because I think it's a good fit for me, where I am in my career, the skillsets that, that I like to employ, uh, the challenges that I like to face. And uh, in looking through the projects that were in your, in your advertisement, all of those projects appealed to me as things that, that I can tackle and, and help you accomplish. When I looked at your select board goals, I found similar language to my goals. You can look on my town website, it's a little old because I was deployed, but um, very similar focuses. And I am trying to finish a master plan for Hubbard that creates a strategic plan that, that you already have in place. So I'm very excited to move from getting the, the, the resources and the grants to get the master plan written because we don't have the resources to just write one, to the execution side that I've been working on. And, and you have that here. So it's a new challenge for me, but an exciting one where you can see the end product of a lot of thought and care. And how can we make this paper now reality and work on a town that people want to see 10, 20 years from now? So I think I'm a good fit for you. I think you're a good for, for me. And um, I just wanted to show you how I work, show you how I think and show you how I communicate because you know, we have to be a fit for each other in order for it to be successful. And um, I've enjoyed very much talking to you in here, enjoy your town. I come here a lot and um, would very much like to be a part of it.
Great, thank you. So that concludes our first interview. Brian?
Thank you very much, Brian. Really appreciate um, hearing from you and uh, we'll be in touch.
Airship, everybody.
Yes, so we're going to, um, this is our dinner break now. So for those, for those that are on the um, Zoom call, uh, that may have missed it initially. So we're taking a 30-minute break, uh, where we're going to have dinner. Encourage you all to do the same, but we will be back. Uh, the next interview uh, is scheduled for um, 6:45 with Michael McCall. And we'll be back a few minutes before that. Thank you. Welcome, Michael. Have a seat and um, we've met before, Barney Arnold.
Yes.
David, you want to?
David Modell.
Kate Reed. Travis Snell. Nathan Brown.
So welcome and we're, um, going to have John um, lead off with some questions. So welcome. And we're gonna have John lead off with some questions and then we'll chime in as we go along.
So, Michael, thank you for being here. You have a camera straight in front of you. I just speak close to the mic. They're asking about six inches. With a remote setup here. So so you can be heard in the audience. So we are on Zoom and live and so on. So so again, Michael, thank you for your interest in in Carlisle. And congratulations, you know, on being a finalist here for the position. So why don't we start off, since the boards introduced themselves to you, you introduce introduce yourself to the board, take a few minutes to tell us about your history and your specific interest in this position? And why do you think you'll be successful here?
Well, thank you. Thank you very much for having me. I'm very excited to be here this evening. I thank you for the opportunity to come in and introduce you myself and tell you a little about my qualifications to be your next town administrator. My background is an interesting little story. I started out as an engineer and I went to undergrad for computer science and I got a master's in computer science. I wound up being a project manager and wound up leading a project based in Switzerland, where I started my interest in foreign languages. From there, when I came back, I continued project management. I worked for several high tech companies. And at one point, while working for Cisco Systems, I had the ability to go to law school, to become an intellectual property attorney, which I did for a little while. Based with the prospect of a possible second relocation, having come from New England, wanted to stay in New England, my wife and I decided to stay here. So I turned my attention towards litigation, which is something I want to be in the courtroom, specifically municipal litigation, because I had been a select board member for nine years prior. And I'd also served for three years in my town's FinCom. Once I got involved there, I wound up to get more trial experience, became a prosecutor, wound up working with a lot of smaller towns in New Hampshire. And at one point, I was asked by one of the police chiefs to put in for town administrator. And at that point in time, the thought had not crossed my mind. But then I realized it was a dovetail of everything that I'd done up to that point. I did put in for that position. I was not successful. But then I started my career track towards trying to become a town manager, town administrator, positioned to open up my hometown about six years ago. And I took that as the assistant town manager. After being there for a little while, I went to Suffolk University and got a certificate in local government and which I turned into an MPA. I just finished this last year during COVID. And my concentration in Capstone was in climate change mitigation adaptation and resiliency. And I've since become town manager in the town of Southbridge. So during the course of my career, my skills have been based on logic, analysis, reasoning. Empathy, learning about budgeting and project management. And I believe those uniquely qualify me as well as my experiences domestically, internationally, working at all different levels with people of all walks of life. To be an excellent public administrative official. Why I chose Carlisle. Carlisle is a town I grew up to next to most of my life. My family and I have spent a lot of time coming here. I brought my kids here to the Cranberry Boggs. We've come to the state park. We've gone to Kimball's, but I knew it as Bates Ice Cream when I was a young man. We used to come here. It's been a town that I've known over the years to be a very stable, unique community in that it has so much open space. The government is well run. Mr. Goddard was here for twelve years. And I want to be a part of a community that is like that, that I can call home. And having grown up right here, right next door, having worked on one of the last dairy farms, one of the last poultry farms. I know what Chelmsford used to look like. And it used to look like Carlisle, and it's changed. And I understand that's something that you want to preserve here. And having lived through these various experiences in big towns, small towns, I think I bring a lot to the table. And that is why I can be an effective town administrator.
Thank you, Michael. A detail I did forget in the beginning, we're doing a one hour interview here. So we're gonna make sure we stay within that one hour. How would you work with the board in understanding the vision of the board for the town? And what do you see a role in that process as well as setting a path for implementation?
Thank you. Great question. My anticipation is if I am selected as your next town administrator, I would spend time working one on one with each of you to understand your goals, visions and objectives for the town. I've already looked at Carlisle Ford, your master plan, and I would work with each of you on how we can work and implement that. I understand some of the challenges that you face in here, given that you have very little, if any, commercial and most of your tax base relies upon residential. Portions of the levy. What I would be working with you is to look at long range planning. Right now, what I'm focusing on in my own community is success succession and contingency planning, as we know through the pandemic that greatly affected staffing. But I would also be looking at heading off things such as in your municipal vulnerability program in your, you went after a programming. Grant identifying those issues that would be facing the town going forward. You can save through efficiencies and economies of scale if you get out ahead of few of these things. But also looking, I know you're interested in looking at regionalization of some issues. I have worked on co ops in the past in Chelmsford for acquiring utilities such as gasoline. We've used a lot of innovative grant programs in Southbridge, including the US Department of Agriculture. We just brought in two point six million dollars for rail trail there. So I have worked on creative grant opportunities. I would do the same with you folks here. But it would be living within our means, trying to be creative, working with our staff. To do more with less, I've had to do that. And we've had to learn to do that through the pandemic. And that would be how I would work with you folks to address the issues challenging Carlisle as you go forward.
What's the difference between leadership and management?
Again, great question. I think management is ensuring the day to day tasks are properly facilitated. I've been a project manager, but the combination. Of a great leader is one who can manage and one who can set an example and take charge during times of crisis or challenge. Many of us have been put in that position in the last two years. And it was very comforting to know that my employees. Were very happy with me being at the helm. We had to put together a vaccine distribution center in Southbridge. We had several instances where we had to. Close the building to the public. On a weekly basis, I've had to deal with a variety of crises. Last week, you might find if you Google Southbridge in the news, we had a granite church had part of its steeple collapsed. And we had to take public safety action for that. Over the weekend, I had a water main break. So I'm not a stranger to having to deal with crises at any hour of the day. And I think a good leader is one who has the skills, who can step up, knows how to manage their people and respond appropriately with a measured response. Someone I've always looked to is Colin Powell, who is, it's often attributed to him, the forty seventy rule that if you don't have at least forty percent of the information, you can't make a good decision. If you wait to get seventy percent or more, you're waiting too long. It's the ability to know when you have the right amount of information and to act based on the skills you require.
So what type of work culture do you hope to create and foster in town hall? And how would you go about accomplishing that?
I've often viewed myself as a player coach. I'm not afraid to get in and work. I've been a lifelong learner and I believe in getting in and understanding the rules. That goes back to what I said before about succession planning and contingency. Two times in my career, when I first became an assistant town manager, when I started in Southbridge as the town manager. Staff was hit with illness or COVID, and I found myself the only person in the office. So I had to learn all the job functions of the administrative support staff. It was eye opening, taught me how to appreciate their jobs. But I've also been a collaborative leader and a team builder. And I've worked hard to put together and reorganize the HR department in Southbridge. I've brought in two great people. And we're working on efforts to involve employees in recognition programs, foster more employee related events where we can get people together to work together and foster that team atmosphere. Sometimes that's overlooked, but that's often a great way to get people to work together, spend more time together in the common interest of the community.
So being that this is a town administrative position, not a town manager position, how do you work in the dotted line scenario? We have more dotted line employees than solid line employees.
Again, thank you. I have some of that currently. I have some elected officials that I work with and I have other officials that are reporting only to an administrative board that's been either elected or appointed. And again, you have to foster a relationship, mutual respect, working with them. You're not their supervisor, but you have to underscore that the the goal that we're trying to achieve is for the community, the best interest of the community. And we can only do that by working together. So I've had to. Work in several instances, I said, with some folks like that. And in the end, you know, if you're cooperative and you see each other's strengths and weaknesses and you can complement each other, you can can find an appropriate way to solve the problem.
How do you set the conditions to have a high morale organization in this type of scenario, where people have many reporting structures that includes various boards you were just talking about?
Again, I think it goes back to recognition. If I would be fortunate enough again to be a town administrator, if you heard reports, you would hear the term we as opposed to I. I like to take time during my town manager reports to talk about the highlights and achievements of some of my staff. I think it's important for them to to recognize, be a recognized, but also to know that they're being recognized by their supervisors and the leaders in the community. So oftentimes, the smallest thing can turn out to be the biggest thing. So, you know, working with someone on a day to day basis, commenting on having done a good job, or even bringing that up at a town meeting or a select board meeting goes a long way. I also think day to day contact, I try and make time to walk through the town hall and visit the various employees and check in on them. I think people like to know that they're valued as a person and not just a person sitting at a desk, but more as a human and that there is that interaction with the other members of the staff.
So we discussed in the screening around the 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 opportunity to develop the first assistant, you know, town administrator here. What skills would you seek for the for that position? And how should they complement your skills?
So. I've had to do a wide variety of things. My forte tends to be budgeting, management, contracts, collective bargaining. I would think that a key component here may be working on human resources. And I've developed, as I said, a new human resources department. I have a broad knowledge of, or I should say, a broad skill set that one would need to be a town administrator. But you can't specialize in everything. And HR is becoming more and more specialized. So I would think that one of the key components of that position would be working on HR. I come with an IT background, but I also think that any assistant should be able to assist the administrator with updating the website, having an overview of key components such as security, IT. Security. And I would ask them to assist in procurement as well. I am a Massachusetts certified public procurement official. And I enjoy doing that, but you do need someone to be a backup. So I think an assistant would. Be valued in learning some of those skills, but their primary focus would probably be on HR. And that would complement the skill set that I would bring.
So let's go to finance. So describe your past role and, you know, financial planning, including developing budget capital, you know, improvement plans and ensuring financial sustainability.
Thank you. For the last six years, I've been involved for as an assistant town manager, working with Paul Cohen in Chelmsford, helping him with his budgets. And for the last two budget cycles in Southbridge, I've been responsible for the budget. Putting it together with the finance director and presenting it to the town council. We have a city formal government in Southbridge. So at the end of the day, the the budget has my name on it, the presentation has my name on it, as well as the capital plan that's advanced. So we did a five year capital plan. This past year, I revised the capital plan, the format, working with an ad hoc capital planning committee that was put together by several of the council members. So I do like to interview my department heads throughout the budgeting cycle to understand what their capital needs would be. We have a formal process that they will submit. Items to the manager and the finance director for inclusion and evaluation for the capital plan. And we have a five year plan, as I mentioned. But budgeting, I truly enjoyed it. I spent a lot of time over the years working with Excel. And I do an awful lot of Excel spreadsheets for forecasting. When I do collective bargaining, I cost out all the contracts. I look at all the various articles and what each side is asking for and build tables based on unit data to know exactly what it's going to cost me on my proposals versus their proposals. And we do similar things across the fiscal year, looking at our revenues to ensure that we're not falling behind. And all of our budgets are based on our revenue projections, based on our local receipts, as well as what we get from time to time from the state as well as our other taxes. So. Always sustainable practices. We never spend one time monies on anything other than one time expenditures. And so it's always prudent fiscal policy in the budgets that I've worked on. And I would continue to work on.
To dig a little further, communities, you know, tend to, you know, overlook things such as facilities. So how would you, how would you go about developing that for capital improvement?
So. One of the things that I'm tasked with right now that I'm starting to work with with our school department is looking for overlapping services. And I think if I understand the question for the maintenance of facilities, we're trying to look where we can have shared services among staff between the DPW and the school department. Trying to put together long range plans to maintain some of the critical portions of our older buildings. We have a lot. Older properties and parcels in Southbridge relative to some other communities. So, you know, identifying the most critical needs. If you haven't put together, and I didn't see one, but a financial, excuse me, facilities master plan study of all of your buildings to determine which ones that are in the greatest need. That would be something that I would work on and then develop a plan, how your capital plan would be used to address year to year improvements. As well as combining, as I said, shared resources wherever possible to try and get the the most efficient use of that staff.
You mentioned earlier grants and you were successful with two and a half million, you know, on that grant. Talk about grants just a little bit more and, you know, other opportunities you've seen and taken advantage of.
So we have also looked at complete streets. I know paving sidewalks, connectivity is something that's of interest and was mentioned in your master plan. A lot of the compute, community compact grants are ones that we've tapped into for for IT. There's best pack practices grants where you can go in and look at. That would be something if you want to look at sustainability, contingency planning, I would leverage those types of grants. There are green communities grants that we've also leveraged for trying to make the most efficient use of our utilities and to become a greener community. So those are the types of things that I would be looking at on your behalf. To get you the most money that we could to to alleviate the burden on the taxpayers.
So I'm going to dig into HR a little bit more and switch gears a little. So HR today, talk more about the key issues, you know, of today. And the needs that you feel that needs to be addressed in, you know, not just Carlisle, but in communities as a whole.
I think today, following COVID, recruitment and retention is becoming a challenge for a lot of communities. If you've had the opportunity to go to the Massachusetts Municipal Association website, you'll see almost three hundred jobs coming open a month. There's post COVID, it's been more challenging to find people. I think it starts with recruitment of younger folks coming in wanting to work for municipal government. We can't compete with the private sector and some of the things that they offer, hybrid work environment, different fringe benefits, but. Providing certain capabilities, changing your hours to accommodate people, being a little bit more accommodating and thinking outside of the box can often address some of those issues. We, much like Carlisle, have different hours where occasionally we stay open later on one day than the other. Allows people to leave a little earlier. We do some types of flex time. I recently participated in Massachusetts Municipal Managers Association. We talked a lot about. Issues outside of the workplace, coming to work with employees post COVID. And people rely more on employee assistance programs in being understanding and empathetic of some of the challenges people are going through, because there's an awful lot of uncertainty in this day and age that is happening, macroeconomic and international geopolitical events that stress people when they come into work. So. Creating a welcoming environment and being able to accommodate, we've created, I created a work from home policy. So we have some people rather than having to take, let's say, FMLA to. Stay home and take care of someone, allow them to work from home when they're doing that. So it works both ways. We we keep a valued employee. It allows them the flexibility to take care of whatever they need to. So. In that term, HR has to be a little bit more flexible. There are. Um there are constantly more and more filing requirements, and that's the specialty that I was referring to earlier that. Um HR is becoming something that you have to constantly read up on. Um so having someone who can focus a a dedicated portion of that time. I think it's a necessity in this day and age.
Let's get into a scenario here. So uh let's say you're responsible for making sure that all department heads completed a specific task. But one department head refused uh to complete that task using lack of time, you know, um as as a reason. How would you address that?
So. I've always maintained an open door policy and I would continue to do that for all employees regardless if they're entry level employees or department heads. Uh and I would have hoped that I had built a relationship with that department head where they would have come in ahead of time and told me that they were having a problem. And when someone comes to me with a problem, I expect that they're going to come to me with some type of solution to accom- accompany that problem. Barring that. I've always believed in a form of progressive discipline. I've had to utilize that in the last six years and as. My time as a public administrative official is as well as in the the private sector. So we would start by understanding what the nature of the problem was and taking corrective action. And typically these start with uh verbal warnings and they can lead up to written warnings and ultimately um. Termination in some cases, but what you need to do is you have to. Ensure that this person is going to complete the tasks that they're. Dictated to or 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 assigned to because if you have breakdown at certain levels, it's only going to. Set an example for anybody that's working either uh as a peer or somebody below them. So. You have to ensure that people are following the rules at all levels. And that's always been a philosophy in mind. You can't let somebody. Uh get away with something because they're a department head, just as you couldn't let a frontline employee not do their tasks. So we treat everybody the same. If you're not doing your, what you're supposed to, you face the same set of progressive discipline.
Let's talk about communication and you've talked about it a little bit, you know, gone through. Let's dig into it. How would you increase communication? Internally and externally, um and including using technology and uh the new communication methods.
Sure. Uh as I indicated before, I like to maintain an open door policy. I'd like to keep the uh town council as I would you folks updated on a regular basis. I send out regular emails to the town council on issues that come up because I never want you folks to be the last people to know about something going on in the community. For instance, when the the water main broke over the weekend, um I text, I first called the chairman. And then I texted and emailed the entire board. Make sure that they knew what was going on in town. Then my next step was to contact all of the department heads. I had already been in contact with the DPW on water. We then went on to the website. We recent, I recently oversaw uh upgrading our Civic Plus website. And my ultimate goal, although we haven't been able to do it just yet, is to integrate our social media feeds. With our website using RSS feeds so that whenever we update the website, it gets sent out to social media. We try and take advantage of our local press whenever there's a newsworthy story. And I try and ensure that everybody is kept up to date with regular emails and staff meetings in um town hall. So that there's always a constant um chain of communications going back and forth. Again, I rely on the department heads to make sure they're giving me the information because we all look good if we're all sharing the information. And. We we need to make the elected leaders look good too. So we have to make sure that you're the first people to know. As well as the residents.
You talked about, you you know, you've got a, you know, you've got some past in IT, you know, one of the issues, you know, um uh moving forward here is in many towns is. Um you know, how 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 to handle IT going forward. There is no full time IT director here. You know, how would you look at handling IT and also getting people more comfortable on staff using various programs?
So for the last six months or so, we had been without any IT support in house in town hall. We had had a department head who had taken an interest in it over the years and kind of fell into the position. Um the biggest challenge is probably what we call boots on the ground. So my office, my executive assistant and some of my other staff, we handle some of these calls that come in. Um but we also utilize a managed service provider. And that is very common where you contract with an outside service that has a dedicated hotline. They maintain a lot of your your firewall and your email. And your website. And if there's issues, the employees can call them. Um it gets a little difficult if people have to come on site. I am looking to bring in someone that I can have there on a regular basis, but I could foresee that you could have a balance. A managed service provider because it may not be economically uh feasible to have a full time. Um IT manager in a community of this size, but you could. Conceivably have a part time person that came in and did some of those, as I call boots on the ground issues. If somebody needs. To upgrade something, their software or a new piece of hardware for printers not working. You get somebody on a schedule, on a regular schedule. They come in every other day for half a day and do some of that work. So I think a blended. IT response would be appropriate for a community much like Carlisle. That's what I'm doing. Southbridge, we're slightly bigger. We're a little over fifteen thousand and we're managing to work uh that way when we've, we've had. Um some attempted cyber attacks. We've managed to stave off some of those using our managed service provider. So it's been working well. But given our size and the number of employees in the satellite locations, I would like to have some of them on a more regular basis from my current community. But I think bringing staff together, utilizing, there's oftentimes free training or bringing in one of these consultants. Uh for a day to explain to people how they can, you know, add a printer to the computer. Um and maybe go through an upgrade or two of some software that would be beneficial to get people more comfortable. And oftentimes just Googling the question will provide you a tutorial that you can use. Uh and I know I I'm, I do that once in a while myself.
So you serve several terms as a select person. Uh you've been an assistant and now, you know, you're an administrator. You know, how, what's, describe your interactions uh with the public. How do you, how do you work with the citizens in town?
I joke with people, but I get a lot of my messages still on the little pink notations. And I have a red magic marker and I have them laid out on my desk and I have a big stack over here in chronological order. As they come in, they don't go. Either, you know, think of the old deli spike. They don't go over there till they've been called back and there's either a message or. In some cases, it's an unsolicited sales call and I'll make that notation, especially if I've talked to them before. But I strive to return every call and every email. I think my greatest experience and my greatest preparation for working in government was my years in district court as a prosecutor. Because. The great equalizer oftentimes is walking across the threshold into the courtroom. Because the law looks at everybody the same regardless of what town you're born in and how much money your family has. And you get to walk in and deal with people from all walks of life. So it teaches you compassion and understanding. Um that's where I learned to use some of the language skills that I learned in college in Europe, working with some people that are coming into the courtroom for the first time. And you get people, as I said, mall walks of life, all education levels. So. You learn how to treat people well, respect them um and listen. And listening, uh Mr. Petron talked about communication. Listening is the most important part of communication. And I found being a good listener. Um and being able to take the time and, as I said earlier, sometimes the smallest thing can pay the biggest dividends. If you listen, you know, you you fix a uh some edging at a curb with the DPW, you pro- replace a street sign. Or you get the police to do uh radar patrol on somebody's street. Those make big difference. And the quality of life for a lot of people and and it really helps the community. So those are the things I've learned over time. Um I was unofficially the traffic czar in Chelmsford because I had all the trucking complaints and things. And I helped get some routes changed in East Chelmsford from UPS facility. And I didn't realize how many people would stop me and say, thank you for changing our neighborhood and getting the trucks out. So it's those little things that make the difference in the community. So now I wait. The Ricker Road when. Well, what had happened, they were cutting through the back end and all the side streets. So we had to work with Mass DOT to to stop that.
So a a little bit further on, um you know, conflicts and and dispute. So, you know, you got uh two folks who just really. You you know, you need to settle a a dispute between those two folks. How do you go about doing that?
Um I I deal with that a lot in collective bargaining and that's a little easier. Uh if you have two employees. That are having a dispute, uh that's a little bit more challenging. I think you have to approach each one of them one on one initially. Again, understand the issues. Involve HR if necessary. Um but we have brought employees and their supervisors in to have conversations at the same time. To iron out problems, um reminding that there is a relationship, you know, there is a supervisor, you have to follow direction. Um and then working with the supervisor to ensure that, you know, they're delivering the message and the task. In in such a way that it can be accomplished and not adversarial. So it's again, key is listening. A formulating a plan and getting people to understand the rules and work together to get the job done. If there's a problem, if it persists, then as I said before, you have to look at what the problem is, what the corrective action is. Um you know, there's always two, excuse me, it takes two to tango. But there may be somebody who's more of the button pusher and they may need the one that needs to be pulled aside. Um and the corrective action may not be both. And that's why you start isolating the two. Figure out the problem and then maybe speak to them um together at the same time to resolve it.
You get the citizen who comes into the office and just irate, you know, about something happening. You were talking about trucking earlier. Just irate out there and, you know, they're they're driving, you know, they they they're driving staff nuts. How do you address that?
Um I usually tell my staff in any incident. Please refer them to my office. I don't want my staff, if if they don't feel comfortable dealing with that situation, that's. The role of the manager, the administrator to take that and and at least in my opinion. And that's where I go down and back up my staff, even if they, if they want to handle it and they want me there. But I've had numerous such situations in the course of my career. And again, it comes listening, validating the complaint. And then explaining what. The possible options are for resolution. And sometimes that means saying, there isn't anything that I can do today for you. However, I will look into it and then I make sure that I call that person back, even if I still have to say I cannot accommodate your request. But again, it goes back to some people just need to be validated. A lot of people, especially post COVID. You see it when it's time to pay taxes, they're very upset. And they come in and they may have an issue with the bill. Sometimes it's been a math error and you explain it. And once, once you listen and you can at least provide an explanation, sometimes that calms that person down and gives them some satisfaction. Sometimes there are extremes and I've had some of these where occasionally we've had to call um the local. Uh officer on duty to come over and just say, you know, you need to, this is a public building, we're trying to conduct business. We have a code of conduct. We're asking you to please, you know, work with us to help you. And if that doesn't, we then have to ask them to leave. Occasionally, we've had to ask people that they only do business via internet or via mail. Um because they cannot adhere to the code of conduct or make our employees feel safe.
Schools are important here, you know, in Carlisle as in many places. Um how would you develop that relationship? You um with the, you know, the local school as well as the regional school?
So uh today is Thursday and yesterday was my uh i-weekly call with the. We have a receiver, we're in receivership in Southbridge, but he would be akin to the superintendent. But every other Wednesday, we sit down at least for a half hour and talk about things that are going on at the school. His budget and capital issues, um just just to make sure we have a uh good working relationship. We also talk about whatever's. Going on in the schools that might come onto my plate during a a council meeting and vice versa. If there's something that comes up at a council meeting, I make sure I let him know. So again, it's a collaborative effort to make sure that um if there's a problem, I can help him and vice versa. And it's a collaborative effort during the budget season. We talk to each other as well as the capital planning. I've supported his efforts this uh this time around to, he got an additional chapter ninety money. And I supported his use of that to do a school building facilities master plan so that we could pursue. Massachusetts School Building Assistance Program Grant so that we could repair a lot of our capital items. So. Uh I would do the same here where I would work in conjunction with the Carlisle schools and the Carlisle. Um to ensure that we're on the same page, sharing information in support of one another's goals to improve the schools or any capital needs.
Let's turn to these folks, you know, at this point, talk about the relationship, um you know, with the board. So describe, you know, uh what you see as the overall relationship. And how do you envision working with this lab board?
So uh it hasn't come up yet, but I'm sure I would be asked at some point, you're a town manager and how, how do you see a transition to a town administrator? I've been a program manager, project manager and facilitator throughout my career. Um in Southbridge, the interesting part of their charter is um I I have appointments, but the town council has to ratify all my appointments. Similarly, they have to approve of every transfer that I make either inter or intra departmentally. So. This time of year, even if I have to uh move money thirty five dollars from one account to the other, I have to come back to town council to do it. So in in some regards, my current situation is not too different from uh that of a town administrator. But my job here would be to fulfill the the wishes of the select board um and the community. What's laid out in the master plan to help you move Carlisle forward. So. I would attend the meetings, listen to what you have to say and go back and implement that with the staff. Uh I bring a lot of other skills to the table as I indicated, financing, uh financial uh planning. Collective bargaining and I would use those skills to invest my ability to achieve the goals that you set for me. And those would all be ascertained after I would meet with each one of you af- after coming on board. As well as meeting with all the department heads and reviewing all of the necessary documents to put a pathway to success for the community.
I have a quick follow up on that. Um. So the select board here, and I'm sure it's similar in Southbridge, um you know, members rotate off after a three year term. If they don't choose to run for reelection and it's staggered terms, so you could be facing a situation where year after year you have. You know, a changing membership on the select board. So. How do you see your role as the town administrator? In um. Sort of, you know, you're the one uh sort of the top uh staff person in town. And you provide some consistency and continuity. Uh and yet, you're talking about trying to fulfill the goals of the select board. So how do you see that? Uh you know, year after year, when the select board may change and therefore the goals may change and. How how do you, how would you approach that?
Well, I'm, my career has been no stranger to change. I've had several select boards change. Uh during my time in Chelmsford and I've already had some change in Southbridge. I got to meet the candidates as they were running for office, getting a bit of an understanding. Many communities, there's inevitable that you're going to have change. So, but there, it isn't wholesale change. In most instances, it's two people or one person or sometimes nobody changes on a given election cycle. So you won't see a dramatic change in, or you shouldn't see a dramatic change in the goals of and objectives of. Any uh board, the five member board. Uh but there would be some over time. You also look to the the documents that you create. Usually master plans come in most communities about every ten years. So you'll have a s- a set of plans that you can work from. And then you may vary those plans as you go along based on the changing face of the board. As a result of the annual elections. But it wouldn't be any different. Um I'm getting to meet my new uh council members. Um people's positions change over time depending upon the economy. So there's always change that's happening. It's it's, you know. Learning to adapt to that change, but yet still trying to fulfill the mission of moving a town forward based on what the long term goals are. But also the short term goals of the people that are sitting in the positions right now.
Michael, um how, how do you, um what's a successful relationship look like with the board? You know, uh you've been here, let's say. You know, you've been here, let's say you've been appointed, you'd be here six months. What's that, what's that look like having success with this board?
I think it's being able to anticipate a lot of what people expect. And what I do to meet those expectations. My goal is to meet all of your expectations and I would like to have a comfortable relationship with each one of you so that you could call me at any time, talk to me about an issue. And that I could read the direction of the board. That's. What I've been doing up till now and it's been working for me, having the individual relationship, the total relationship, understanding the community. And, you know, my own expectations, I hold high expectations of myself. Making sure that I complete every task and into the satisfaction of the elected leaders. So my expectation after six months would be, we have a formal working relationship and a comfortable working relationship where you can call me. Ask for requests, but I also understand what it is that you want and I'm almost able to start anticipating how. You'll be voting and what direction you'll be taking on certain issues that are facing. That's when I think I have a good understanding of what's going on and that. That to me is a comfortable relationship, that communication, that understanding and the ability to work together.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've got a quick follow up on that too. So our select board, the five of us, we, you know, we meet and when we have our meetings, the town administrator is at the table with us and. We. Look to that person, not just to provide us, you know, with the materials for the meeting and the ability to make good decisions, but also to. Offer their opinion. And so I'm just interested in how you see your role in that kind of a setting. And what you're, how you present yourself publicly in those public meetings.
Thank you. No, I'm happy to offer any advice that I may be able to provide. I've had a wide variety of experiences. Especially in Southbridge, it's a very diverse community. But even in Chelmsford, I've managed a golf course, an ice skating rink, we have a municipal airport, I have oversight over that. We have a city-like environment in Southbridge, given our population density, a very diverse cultural. Background in Southbridge. So I've been able to pull a lot from an awful lot of experiences. So I think I would be able to shed an awful lot of. Experience, advice and opinion on a wide variety of topics and be a resource for the board so that at any time something came up. Be more than happy to contribute if you wanted or be there for question and answer.
If I may. So. The, so one question I have is. You started in Southbridge in September of 2020, kind of the middle of the pandemic. They're not quite two years yet. One of the things about being a town administrator is kind of like being, being kind of the face, the central person to a lot of the town activities and a lot of that is. You know, kind of the, the interpersonal connections and learning the town and, and learning the people in the town. How did you manage that and how did you approach that with the pandemic?
So I spend an awful lot of time in Southbridge. I often stay there during the week. I have made time to meet a lot of people working in various community organizations. I immediately made inroads to the Latinx community. I actually gave my first speech in Spanish as a public official in Southbridge, speaking to the, the Latinx senior group at the community center. Today I was involved with their substance abuse task force. I go to cops and kids nights, I go to a lot of community events, I speak at the Southbridge Business Partnership. So. Probably one of my biggest faults is I accommodate every task. So I spend a lot of time in the town. Trying to get things done. We have a lot of subcommittee meetings during weeknights that don't start till six or seven o'clock, which affords me. Time in the evening to work and also get out and talk to people in the community and go to some of these events. So I'm able to immerse myself into the community of Southbridge, living right next door in Chelmsford. I foresee myself doing the very same thing here in Carlisle. And just because we're close by, I, I drive through the town oftentimes on the weekend. My wife and I were at Kimball's the other week. We enjoy coming here, we sat and chatted with a lot of lovely folks in line over at Kimball's. I would do the same thing, get involved. Up until recently. I was a board member at the Merrimack Valley Food Bank. I had to step to an advisory role just because I'd spent so much time in Southbridge. But I was involved with the Paul Center, as you know, right over the line years earlier when I was a finance committee member as well as a. Early select board member. So I've always given time both to the community as a public leader, but as a servant to the community and volunteer activities. And nothing would change here in Carlisle. My philosophy is my philosophy and I would still be. Working for the betterment of the community as a paid employee, but also working in these other capacities to make the community better and as a representative. Of the community, town hall participating.
Great, thank you. One other question, could you? One of the bullets on your resume is that you worked with community stakeholders on economic development initiatives. Could you just give two brief examples of that?
It's hard to be brief. We didn't have an economic development director in Chelmsford. Prior to that, I did all the outreach to the businesses. I did mass emails, volunteered to meet and go out and listen to the. Various businesses. I did the same thing in Southbridge, even though we have an economic development director. I go to the ribbon cuttings, I sit down when they want to do business expansion, when they're coming in for licensing. So we want to make an inviting environment for business to come in to the community, whether it was Chelmsford, Southbridge, or if I'm here in Carlisle. It goes back to the open door and the communication. I reach out, introduce myself to the businesses. And then when they need something, I'm willing to listen and talk to them and see what we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Michael, you submitted a work product, so thank you for doing that and I'll call it a budget message. Basically for fiscal year 23, can you just tell us about that document, you know, what went into preparing that document, why and so on?
Thank you, Jenna. As an introduction to the budget presentation that I put together every year. I wanted to put an informative trans, transactional letter to the city council, letting them know how the budget was put together. What the key components of that budget were, what the financial policies that I relied upon to do that and. How I achieved the outcomes that they had asked for. So. I wanted it to be informed not only for them, but the citizenry. I put something similar together for the annual town report. My predecessor had not done one. I know that's a requirement here because of our former government, it isn't. Every town is required to put one together with a select board. But again, it goes back to communication. I want to make sure I can answer the question before the question comes to me. So by putting together a comprehensive. Letter introducing the budget, explaining the key components and why I did what I did. I hope to ensure that you fully understand what I'm doing on your behalf. And if there are any questions, then I'm willing to entertain them, but I want to supply as much information as I can to the elected officials.
Questions on the work product? Questions in general from the board?
Hi, thanks for your time today. So building on your response to. I think it was Nathan's question on sort of community involvement. You, you've, you've been assistant town manager in Chelmsford, which is not the most diverse place, but it has diversity. It certainly has a mix of. Industry and residential and I am a business manager in Chelmsford, I know the town quite well. And it's a pretty large town relative to us and Southbridge. Seems to present quite a few, I would think, very interesting challenges for a town manager in terms of the racial diversity and. Some of the issues that you've mentioned. So really. What, and I, and I take your point about the rural charm of Carlisle, et cetera, but in terms of interest complexity. This is not a complex job. I mean, it's got a lot pieces to it, but it's nowhere near as rich in the. Issues that I think a government professional would really want to get involved with. So I'm really kind of more curious to dig a little deeper into. What really attracts you to this compared with where you are or some assignment that would be similar to where you are in, you know, the, what I'm guessing is. Maybe the last stop in your career, your municipal career, maybe not, but can you expand on that?
Thank you, David. It really goes back to what I said at the very beginning about Carlisle being a stable environment. Mr. Goddard here was 12 years. As I said to the screening committee, you know. Having a relationship that you can build for a long term, a place that you can call home is really what I'm seeking. I have been. In the administration side for six years and as you've indicated, I, I going through the motions, learning where I fit in. You know, there's aspects of each position that I've had that I've enjoyed and there's challenges, I like, there's always new challenges. The challenges here are unique, maintaining the open space, looking at green issues. As I said, my capstone was climate change, you have the river nearby, you have the bogs, you have, you have a different set of challenges. And it's stability that attracts me more than anything else, if that really answers your question. But it is a community that I've always enjoyed and admired because of the open space and the fact that despite. What goes on around you, Route 3, Route 4, Route 5, you've thrived and maintained that and held on to that where. The Chelmsford that I grew up with, that used to look like that, it's no longer that way. So if I learned anything from my time in Chelmsford, if I can help. See where we went wrong and help you here, that's one of the things I think I bring. And that's one of the things I, it attracts me to, it is helping to maintain that in this ever-changing world.
Other questions from the board? So seeing none. At this point, we're pretty close to our time here. So, Michael, this is an opportunity for you to present a closing statement to the board and please feel free.
Again, I want to thank you for affording me the opportunity to come here this evening. I was very excited and honored to be a finalist here in Carlisle. For the position of town administrator, as you have some of my work product as well as my resume. I bring a variety of experiences to the table, having served in technical, legal and administrative background. I feel that I have the necessary skills and a unique set of skills that would allow me to. Address any challenge or issue that comes up for the board, being a resource for the board. And I think working together, I can help craft a plan with you to move Carlisle forward. To keep that stable environment, preserve what you have here and foster that long-term relationship. And I look forward to meeting you again and I appreciate your time and I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
So we have a few minutes for the next interview, which begins at eight o'clock. Andrew McLean.
You have to be named Mac, I'm assuming. To make it through John's.
Yeah, please have a seat, Andrew. And why don't we introduce ourselves first?
Hi, my name's Nathan Brown.
I am Travis Snell.
Travis, hello.
We met before. Hi, Bernie Arnold.
Hi, I'm Kate Reed.
Very nice to meet you all.
Yeah, so welcome. And as before, John is going to sort of be the facilitator for the questions and we'll just kind of chime in as we. See something we'd like to follow up on.
So some of the details, you've got the camera in front of you. And they're asking us to stay about six inches within the mic, I guess, to make sure they pick up. You know, what you need to say and have to say. And as discussed, so this is one hour, is the interview is what we've set aside as a timeframe for the interview itself. So with that, I'm ready to open and the first question is, first of all, thank you, you know, for your interest and congratulations. On being one of three finalists here in Carlisle and. So why don't you take a few minutes to tell us about your history and your specific interest in this position? And why do you think you would be successful here?
Thank you for having me. So I'm Andrew McLean, as you've heard, I'm currently the town administrator in Pepperell, Massachusetts. And I got there through a career in public administration. I spent about 14 years at the University of Massachusetts. In a variety of roles and as I started hitting the, well, well-known glass ceiling at the university, if you don't have a terminal degree, there's only. So far, they're going to let you go. And I saw so many analogies to municipal work in what I was doing at the university. I was in residence hall management and we have trash pickup and police and we have residents. So. So it was, it was a long journey, but I knew leaving the university was the path I wanted to be on. So I wanted to be somebody making decisions in public administration and I had limits at the university there. So I made the jump over to Reading, Massachusetts and public safety. I was a civilian administrator there. And then from, with the benefit of the great people in Reading, put me through the MMA Suffolk program. And from there I got to Maynard, Mass as an assistant and then to Pepperell a few years ago.
Right. So let's talk about how, how would you work with the board in understanding the vision of the board for the town? And what do you see a role in that process as well as setting a path for implementation?
So this is terrific. I learned this from what I didn't like in, in Maynard where I left. There was very little interaction with the board. And when I got to Pepperell, I made a point of meeting with the board, we only have a three-member board there and it's a little easier to do it. But I meet with each of them each week. And it helps develop that relationship that John's question is embedded in. But by meeting with them regularly, and when I first did it, I thought, oh, it'll just be a few months. But now both sides enjoy it. I meet with them individually, but we each look forward to these meetings. I know things about them. I know what's going on in their lives. I know their politics towards the town and we can strategize on how we're going to get things accomplished. For instance, I'm working right now very closely on an affordable housing project with one of the members. Another member wants to create a tax. Exemption for seniors and there's a process for that going through the legislature. So I helped them with figuring out all the homework pieces of that and the background. And then they do the politicking amongst the committees and the citizenry for their, for their goals.
Andrew, what's the difference between leadership and management?
There's a whole course on that, John. So I, I think a really quick answer to this is that the manager is sort of. Getting sort of the daily work accomplished, the, the things that everybody expects, if we're going to talk just about local government. The, the day-to-day operations of a city. That's management. It includes supervising staff and that sort of thing. Leadership gets into sort of the artistic realm of, of inspiring people. And taking a community's culture and getting them to see themselves as better than they were before. With no disrespect to the ancestors, but we're always going to get better and that takes leadership to guide people into that.
I'll let Bernie know and he answered that one. So what type of work culture do you hope to create and foster in town hall? And how would you go about accomplishing that?
So I'm not familiar with the culture. So I'm not familiar with the culture in the building, so you know, taking a bit of a leap of faith that there's nothing wrong with it. And you know, I'll, I'll get to know the, the staff and I'll, you know, we find a fit. Right now I have about 20 direct reports and I have some of them that I think will be lifelong friends and some of them that, oh, I'm glad they're confident and they're good working people, but I'll never see them after hours, that sort of thing, right? Like there's, there's all the colors of the rainbow out there with staff. And I'm sure that's true here in Carlisle. But at the core of that question, I think is perhaps there are some problems that need to be addressed. And maybe it's employees that need more training, or maybe it's employees who need an attitude adjustment. Or maybe they shouldn't be here. All those things need to be addressed by, by the leaders of a community. And I would step into that. I've been involved in those sorts of discussions with employees in the past. And for those employees and most of them, the vast majority of them are not in that category. It's more respectful to them when we're dealing with the ones that are in that category. Because if the person, the, the poor employees, the troublesome employees, the employees that we need to manage wind up creating morale problems for those that we can work with, with a more gentle hand. They're, they're self-motivated, they're competent, they're ambitious on their own. But when they see the others, it brings everybody down. So addressing, addressing problems is part of the manager's role. And it's respectful to everybody and it makes everybody rise.
So being that this is a town administrative position, not a town manager position, how do you work in a dotted line scenario where you have more dotted line employees than solid line employees?
Sure. I've seen this in both of my previous two roles because both towns had adopted charters just a few years back. And they were transitioning from a lot of independent direct reports to select boards and so on, to everybody or most people were reporting through the, the professional managers. I was an assistant in Maynard, but I still had a lot of direct reports. And a lot of it had to really do with the committee structures, like say the conservation commission wanted to manage the employee. And that was all well and good until they had a problem with the employee and then they wanted town administrator to deal with it, right? So we had to navigate that. I saw that in these two towns where there was a relatively new charter and they were still sort of transitioning through that. But more importantly, I think in answering your question, we just need to ask, one committee or one board may want direct active involvement. And there's probably nothing wrong with that. We'll make sure that they understand the framework and the statutory requirements of the work they do. And if they stay within those boundaries, more than happy to have other people lead, other people manage, other people supervise the community, say it's the planning board. And you know, others may say, you know, we want to make a lot of decisions, but we really need the town to get involved and do the work. And I'm happy to step into that, that role as well.
How do you set the conditions to have a high morale organization in this type of scenario with people, you know, again, have many reporting structures, including the various boards?
So I just read this today. A friend of mine from college was posting something on LinkedIn. And it, it goes right to that and it talks about you need to create joy at work or your employees will not be happy. And it was said more eloquently than that, but I really like that. Lots of people are motivated by money or motivated by their, their achievement folks and they, they come to work and they're really proud of getting something accomplished. But overall, if people don't like coming to work, it's because they're not happy. The environment isn't a happy environment. And so finding ways to create joy, whether it's, you know, some, some offices have like a one day a week or one day a month when they do a community meal, that sort of thing. There's various ways you can sort of create sort of an esprit de corps. And certainly if there's issues that are coming from outside the organization that are sort of bearing down on people, those would need to be addressed.
So we talked about this at, at the screening committee and, you know, the opportunity of developing the first assistant town administrator here in Carlisle. So what skills would you seek for that position? And how should they complement your skills?
So if I recall correctly from the, this question came up in the first round and I really need to see what the strengths and weaknesses are, excuse me, inherent in the organization. I have a very broad experience. I've, I've worked in facilities and human resources in financial management. I've worked in public safety. I can talk the talk with the DPW crews. I can't do any of their jobs. I want you to be, be clear about that, right? We need a police chief and we need all these other people. But because I'm conversant with all these people, if our biggest need, let's say, is human resources, let's bring in a human resources assistant and, and focus on that. If our biggest issue is on the finance side, maybe we bring in an assistant who's a finance specialist. But because I have a broad experience, we don't need to limit it to only my area of expertise and then find somebody to compliment me.
So let's jump into the finance side, you know, and, you know, discuss your past role and, you know, financial planning, including developing the budget, capital improvement plans and ensuring financial sustainability.
Okay. I just want to, I want to cover all three of those things. I'm just going to write a quick note here.
So financial planning, including developing the budget, capital improvement plans and ensuring financial sustainability.
So I did a lot of this at the university, but it was at a low level and it was a small budget. But it was a great learning experience and I did it, I was, the university is very cyclical, so you do the same thing over and over again for many years. It's one of the reasons I left. As great as a, a position as it was, it was, it was getting dull. But I brought that financial acumen to Reading PD. And very early on in planning the budgets, the, the chief brought me in. He wanted his police to be working as police officers. That's what they were trained to do. And he was having problems with the command staff where they didn't know how to say, write a grant or how to administer a grant or how to plan a proper budget. And so they were struggling with that. And then the phone would ring and they would run out to do the job that they were trained to do so well. So Jim Cormier, the chief there, brought me in to manage all of these non-law enforcement aspects of the department and the budgets were a big part of it. My first experience there, I was hired in the fall and I believe it was Christmas Eve. It might've been the day after Christmas, but I called the chief because I saw a hundred thousand dollar problem in the budget. And it was a real problem. It turned out to be completely manageable. The, my inexperience with it was that I didn't have the comprehensive understanding of the whole budget to recognize why there was this huge overtime halfway through the year, hundred thousand dollar problem. But we also had four vacancies. And so there were salaries that we could use to offset it. That was my inexperience. But it was also the chief was very happy because here I was relatively new, already, you know, understanding line by line what was important and knowing enough to call him, even though it was a holiday time of year and not just waiting. So I brought that, that financial planning in. The very next thing we did was we justified to the town administrator that we were going to add staff to reduce overtime. And if you know a lot about money, you know that that's not always the case. But the specific details in Reading, it was. And we were able to justify, we had morale problems, we had turnover problems. This was actually in the dispatch center. And the recommendation was add staff. The overtime that's basically going out the door will pay for it. It'll reduce the morale problems. It'll reduce turnover and the town manager went for it. A year later, we, we had been proven correct. And so that was sort of a foundational part of my financial stuff. As I went into Maynard, I then got into capital planning. And for several years I've battled to get a certain type of capital planning done and was unable to get it done in Pepperell. And, or sorry, in Maynard. When I got to Pepperell, I got it done because that, now I was the top dog and I was able to sort of get a little bit more of what I wanted. But in, in Maynard, I was fighting with other, other departments over the best way to handle it. But the capital planning that I wanted to do, they're relatively textbook. You put out a capital plan, you look at your infrastructure and your rolling stock and your equipment needs and you documented and how long they're going to last and so on. And you just plotted out, it's all you know, it's tedious, a lot of work, but it's, it's fairly easy to do in, in the sense of the complexity of it. The difficult part is funding. And the, what the battle I was fighting for was that the capital that we know we're going to spend next year should be in the general fund. And not be, let a bunch of department heads stand up and fight over any available free cash or make an argument for a debt exclusion or something for some capital. We need this. We need this every year. Let's get it in the budget. So that, the capital plans themselves, I have a lot of experience developing, but my, in my opinion that a substantial amount of your annual capital should be in the general fund is, is an important sort of philosophical place I come from.
How would you deal, you know, with your background, especially with facilities? How would you address, you know, preventative maintenance and facilities?
That's all part of that, sort of the capital stuff. So the way I achieved this in, in Pepperell, and I'll answer that as I get through this. I got there and there was a $700,000 a year is being put into the operations in the general fund from free cash. I've been there not even three months and I told the select board, we need a tax override. We are, you know, not landing the ship gracefully. And it, it took us three more months of, you know, daily conversations with the community. Going out to the COA and so on and, and talking to people and saying, we need this and here's why. We got a $1.4 million tax override. So we fixed that structural deficit. We fixed a few other budget problems, which are part of the answer to your question. And we also funded those capital lines that I talked about a few minutes ago. So for instance, Pepperell needs two police cruisers a year. They're in the budget now. They're not fighting for that hundred and $25,000 with every other important issue in town. So we have leases for a lot of our heavy equipment in DPW same way and they're, they're staggered over several years. So the budget isn't going like this. There's always a little bit of money and as a lease gets paid off, we get another piece of heavy equipment. And so that, that was the structure of the budgeting for that. The infrastructure stuff takes a lot more. Pepperell doesn't have a facilities manager in our charter. It's the town administrator. So that means it's one of the, one of the hats I wear. And there's barely enough time in the day to know that the mechanical systems need maintenance and to hire the mechanic to do it and that sort of thing. We're not large enough to have all those resources in our back pocket. But budgeting for them in the general fund budget, John, is the same, same philosophy for me. You can't just wait until it falls apart and then tell everybody you have an emergency. Put 10 or 20 or $50,000 into your budget. Whether it's for paint or carpeting or, or basic equipment repairs and maintenance budget for, budget for your mechanics. We have a 110-year-old library, a little, little younger than the library here. And our library director is a brilliant library. She also cares deeply about the library more than the town did. And she made sure that she budgeted for keeping that building. And it's a real gem of a building in that town in large part because of her effort. Some of the other buildings in town don't look quite as nice. They don't have as, as magical a director. The last part you asked about was sustainability. I think part of what I answered about with the capital plan is part of that. By building $125,000 into the police budget for cruisers, they're going to have dependable cruisers. And when they got there, they hadn't bought one in three years. So they were, they were four or five vehicles behind their planned obsolescence. So we've righted that ship. But now moving forward, if they, if they had some need and they said, we really would like to use some of this capital for something else, well, maybe they could only buy one cruiser this year instead of two. They've got some built-in flexibility and that flexibility is part of sustainability. If you're, if you're always on that razor's edge of bankruptcy, you're never going to move forward. So building in a little bit of, of capacity for the unexpected is, is the key to being sustainable. And of course, they, they went out without any direction for me and bought hybrid vehicles. And now into their third year of it, with fuel prices doubled in the past year, they look, you know, wise beyond their years because if you talk to police departments four or five years ago, there's no way they wanted hybrids. They didn't think they were powerful enough to, or up to the task. So that's a sustainability issue for us is we're able to see a spike in a budget and it's not going to progress.
It seems as if grants have become, you know, much more of an issue than they were five, 10 years ago. Talk about, you know, grantsmanship and, and what you've taken part in.
When I was at the university, I was always interested in this. I'd hear about faculty writing these multimillion-dollar grants coming out of the Department of Education in Washington. It always seemed so, so cool and interesting. And they were principal investigators. They had all these fancy titles and so. In the work that I did in student life, there weren't a lot of grant opportunities. When I got onto the municipal side, it's all grants and you know, the, yeah. Not everybody is a fan of Proposition Two and a half, which is about 40 years old now, but one of the benefits of it, in my opinion, is that the state of Massachusetts has taken its commitment to helping municipalities at the state level and put a lot of money into grants. And they, they sort of say, look, you can have this money, you just going to have to earn it. And the towns that are clever about it do really well. I'm happy to have been a part of being one of those clever towns in multiple occasions. Public safety, we wrote a lot of grants. I managed all the grants for dispatch and for cops grant that we got out of the federal government. Same thing in Maynard. I wrote a $3.2 million MassWorks grant that was tied to economic development and housing and job creation. And we had to have this nexus or you weren't even eligible. And we had it sitting there. I wrote that grant. It was due at the end of July and we had three weeks and everybody was on vacation. So I was the last guy. So it's like everybody get, you get a volunteer and everybody takes a step back. I was the guy still standing there. But you know, I did have help from lots of people, but getting that grant out and then getting it awarded was, was highly satisfying. It was a huge benefit to the community. Fortunately now in Pepperell, I have a lot of other folks doing that, that great work. We had a woman who wrote over a million dollars in grants last year in conservation and infrastructure municipal vulnerabilities program grants, that, that sort of stuff. She just said she had a tremendous year in that regard. But it is the difference between sort of bouncing through our budgets only going up this much. We can barely keep up with inflation and that sort of stuff. And these grants come in and just move your community forward. Do things you never thought you could do. We, we never, Pepperell would never have done a million dollar covert project in this timeframe, were it not for those grants. It's $34,000 out of the town budget.
So moving to HR. What are some of the key issues, you know, and needs that you think need to be addressed in HR in general?
So I think the biggest challenge for me is compliance. There's a ton of federal regulations, state regulations. And I know that we don't do as good a job as we should. And someday that's going to be a problem. But a lot of it is sort of like, you know, we're doing what we have to do. We're doing the minimum. It's, you know, we'll get better. At the employee level though, it's much more personal. So one example, this is, you may or may not be familiar with the Family Medical Leave Act, federal, a federal program that protects employees who have medical issues or are family, family members with medical issues. Federal law says, once we know about an issue, we need to address it within five days. That almost never happens. And you know, I don't know what the penalty is and no one's come knocking on my door yet. But I often don't find out that someone's got some sort of a problem until, you know, they're, they're on the road to recovery already. But we're supposed to implement these FMLA programs and, and it protects the employee and it protects the organization as well. So there's motivation on both sides to do it and do it right. So there's motivation on both sides to do it and do it right. Those types of things just take extra resources. An employee who has a pregnancy, that's an FMLA event, an employee gets injured off duty, that's an FMLA event. And. Protecting the employee is the key for me. I've worked in small towns my entire career and in my municipal career in any case. And I know the names of all these people. And when Bob's out sick, or Bob's wife's out sick. He's not coming to work the same way because he's got other things going on in his life. And it's not about, well, you're not getting your work done. It's about how do we support that employee through that that crisis? And that's the real role of HR is to take our employees and hire well. And make sure they get the resources and the training that's required. Ongoing staff development, all these are sort of the the good side of HR. And then that that problematic side, when you have a problem employee, you address that, that's another another aspect of it. But that middle ground there, like that the FMLA stuff I talked about is where we really make the difference. Everyone expects a certain hiring process and some onboarding and training and so on, and they'll get their benefits packages and they'll get their paycheck. But it's when they have a crisis, whether it's with their boss or with their family member or with themselves, that HR makes a real difference.
So let's get into a scenario in HR. So let's say you're responsible for making sure that all department heads completed a specific task. But one department head has refused using the lack of time as the reason. How would you address that?
So. There's a couple of factors there. It may be true and depending on why the organization wants this test done. We need to figure out if we can be flexible with the timeframe. Perhaps it's that employee's busy time of year. For instance, you know, the town clerk from January to March is pretty busy, which sort of extra work that happens with the census and dog licensing and so on. So every department's got those peak periods. So I would want to look at it sort of comprehensively like that, is there a reason this person can't comply? And then work with them to offload some of their work or to make some arrangements to accommodate it. If there's more to it than that, if it's more attitudinal, this is silly, this isn't important, this beneath me. That needs to be addressed more directly, one on one. Because you know, everyone likes to say they're a team player, but they're they're often not. They're often playing for a team of one. And you know, you don't want to address that in a way that then ostracizes the person or alienates them. But you can't ignore it either. I mentioned that earlier on that when some of those things get ignored, it creates morale problems for many of your great employees. So I would want to address that head on, but I'd also, as I said, I want to make sure that there's not some systemic. Reason that we can't resolve it otherwise.
So communications wise, let's talk about communications a little bit. And please discuss, how would you increase communication internally and externally, including use of technology or new communication methods?
As long as I've been doing goal setting. Improving communications has always been on the list and we often say we can never communicate enough and. It's very true and it can come off kind of smug when you say it a certain way. But. We we just have to do more, whether it's a staff email that goes out once a week that. You know, reminds them of what's coming up next week or reminds them what happened this week. Communication through the board. You have a local newspaper here, right, there's press releases that can go out, there's interviews that can be conducted and they'll they'll do stories on things. Social media in all its forms can be a great tool for us. My big problem with social media is it tends to be passive. I can put it out there and say, oh, it's on Facebook. But if you're not on Facebook or you didn't happen to look at it today, now there's 100 other things on your Facebook feed. And my thing is way down the bottom. So these are all things I say we need to use. We need to use multiple forms. But we can't just say it's on the website, it's I put it up on Facebook, we have to, we have to say, oh. There's 5,000 people in this town, I still have a few more to get to.
I have a follow up for you there. So that, you know, describes Carlisle in many ways, you know, our efforts to. Get information out to people. And I'm thinking, for example, as we go into town meeting, we have. A warrant book, there's a lot of information in it. Some of the committees hold hearings if they have a warrant article. And we get very little, you know, turnout for those. What are your thoughts on how you engage? Community members. Beyond beyond the things you've described, I'm just interested in your thoughts sort of generally about. You know, community engagement and and getting the interest. In the decisions that that the residents are going to be asked to make, for example, at a town meeting where and often here what happens. Is the first time that people really focus on the decisions or when they're in the meeting itself. So just interesting your thoughts on that.
Sure, there's a couple pieces to this. We we do debriefs after our town meetings and sort of say, well, well, what didn't happen, do we? Did we struggle to get a quorum, what can we do better that these things happen in every community? One of the things I've noticed is that the citizens show up. When they care about the issue. So I'll be a little bit snarky here and say, put something controversial on the warrant.
Right.
And you know, people will engage, we've seen the room full when that has happened. And Pepperell doesn't have too much of a problem getting a quorum.
Right.
But the other things that you mentioned are true, a lot of people. Don't know what's on that warrant until they show up and grab the handout at the check in desk and start reading it five minutes before the meeting. And yeah, we had plenty of public hearings and public meetings and information sessions on that particular zoning article or whatever. But. People will show up. Somewhat uninformed and it can be frustrating. I think it is a little bit human nature. I don't think that this is something new, that's certainly not unique to Carlisle, but it's, I don't think it's even new to municipal government. Whether it's apathy or disinterest, one thing I've told some folks privately. In my town is that if people don't show up, it means they're satisfied. It's sort of like a the opposite of like the totalitarian regime where 99.9% of the people voted, right? And in America, only 40% show up. It's because they're fat and happy, right? If if there's a problem, they'll show up and they do. So I don't want to be dismissive of what you're asking. I think it is important to give the information out to our community and and offer it to them, but we can't force them to read it or care about it. And at some point, if 50 people show up or 100 people show up or 500 show up. They're going to make the decision for the rest of the community. And if we've done our best to sort of be transparent, get the information out there. Then those people will leave the community to its best decision. One little aside on this, during the pandemic, the governor allowed us to reduce our quarrels. Because there was concerns about the pandemic and its impacts on meetings. Our board, we have a 75 person quorum and we reduced it to 30. And there's about 30 people in the room just between, you know, this group of people and the media folks and stuff that live in town. So we weren't in any way worried about getting a quorum. But as it turned out, we got probably 50% more than we normally get at our meetings. And in debriefing, one of the things that we heard was that people were worried that 30 people were going to make the decisions for everybody else. And so I I think there's.
Yeah.
People are paying attention that the issue is not that big a deal and only 75 people show up. I go with it.
Yeah.
Zero quarrel. So talk about your interactions and engagements with citizens in your past roles and. Give some specific examples of of some of those dealings.
One of my first days on the job in Maynard, two men came in to see me demanding that we do something about the council on aging. Why can't it be more like stoves, they said to me. And I was talking to them about it and I said, look, are you, they they were complaining that the schools got everything. And nobody's putting money into the senior center. And I said, are you guys willing to stand on the street corner with your signs and say, you know, vote for this initiative, that kind of thing like, because the school people show up and do that. And they were, you know, two gentlemen of a certain age and they, yeah, yeah, we're not going to be out on the street corners, right? And they, but they said, we don't, we don't have any political power. And I talked them through the demographics. And I said, look, you got 1,500 students in the school and you got probably 1,200 parents. That might show up to vote. And said, we have about 2,500. People of your generation out there, if you care about the senior center, you've got the votes to make this to get your way. And. A year later, we opened up a new senior center, it wasn't a brand new building, it was a renovation of of space. But from that minute with those two citizens to a whole bunch of things that transpired. But my focus was on helping them solve that problem. And I did get the political support, they did show up at meetings, they did work the select board to make sure we had the resources we need and we got it done. So one one example of working with with citizens, I could probably come up with another, can you?
Anybody else on that? I'll move on. So let's get into conflict resolution. So, you know, tell us about how, you know, you settled the situation, let's let's say it's, you know. A different type citizen comes in is just very upset about an interaction, you know, with something in town, how do you, how do you address that?
Um, this happens more often than I care to admit. But and oftentimes, I'm in a meeting, this just happened last Friday morning. And the person wanted insisted on speaking to me and my admin wouldn't let her in because. I was in a meeting and the meeting I was in was just as important as whatever her issues were. But an hour or so later, I called her at her home and talked through her issue. And she wasn't quite as loaded for bear as she was an hour or two earlier in the in the office. But I think in in many cases, dealing with citizens like that, it's it's simply that engaging with them, calling them up, returning a phone call. Asking them what what you can do for them. Sometimes sometimes they know it's not your fault and you probably can't fix it. But they they need the venting time. And I don't mind getting screamed at sometimes, as long as it's over the phone. I can hold it over here if I need to, this woman wasn't screaming at me, but if I had let her into my office earlier that day, she probably would have been. But you know, some people have real problems and it's your, you're the first time you get to hear it. And they're hostile and they're angry and they're upset, but they're also right. And we can't just say, oh, because you're belligerent, I'm not going to do anything about it. Our job is to solve these problems. So we have to sort of navigate between and and many, many citizens come in perfectly appropriately. And need something, I need some help, something seems to be going wrong. We all, we all know the stories of the screamers and yellers though, right? So so navigating that and realizing that it's important to them. This woman that I was just referring to had a list, probably about 18 things. That she has a problem with, has to do with a property development that's not going according to plan. Only one or two things on the list I have any control, almost all of it had to do with the developer directly. But we were able to sort of. Here's it, here's what we can do. And including making phone calls to the developer to try to get that person to sort of pay attention to the needs of the of the residents. And you know, hopefully it's it's only been a week, but hopefully we've made some progress with that. And you know, that's one little victory that day, you know, that the next day I might fall flat on my face with somebody, but. You know, the the goal is to solve a problem.
So in Carlisle, as in many places, schools are very important here. And you know, we have a local system and a regional system. How would you, how would you develop that relationship with the schools?
It was interesting, in the description of this job, there was a listing and that was one of the sort of bullet points and it was. Improved relations between the the schools and presumably the town. And I read that and I thought. Because the schools here have a stellar reputation across the country, even certainly regionally. And I thought, oh, that's interesting that the town doesn't feel like those relationships are strong, because I from afar, I wouldn't have guessed that. We had local schools in Maynard and the town administrator and I met with the superintendent several times a year intentionally. Informally, sometimes more formally, but there was good communication about town and school needs. We would go over to the VoTEC once or twice a year and meet with the folks there as well. I brought that attitude with me to Pepperell. I serve on a committee on the VoTEC school. You know, communicating regularly with the superintendent as a result. And we meet quarterly very formally with the regional school district we have, which is three towns. And we bring in. A town administrator, the town accountant and a FinCom member. From each town. And we don't have quarrels, but we can have a meeting like this during the business day and work out a lot of stuff. And then take that back to our respective boards and committees. And so people understand the pain points of the school and the pain points on the town. And we believe it's, we've been able to develop better, stronger budgets with our regional school district as a result of that. We've also made phone calls for them to fix some of the problems with transportation funding at the state level. Because the schools identified that as a big pain point for them, didn't solve the problem, but we're we're helping. And that that's part of that partnership.
Describe the relationship, you know, that you would have, how do you envision working with this select board?
So I think I'll bring the model I use in Pepperell with me. Because I think it's really valuable and this board may not. Embrace it and we'll find a model that that works for this board. But what I would like to do is sit down with the board individually regularly. Until we have a strong relationship personally. So that when we're speaking at a meeting and somebody says something that's a little bit off. The people understand what the person meant and you don't get that if you don't have a relationship, so I know where he's coming from. Whether it's one of you speaking or it's me saying something, but developing that relationship early on, I think is key. If this board functions in a more hierarchical fashion. That works as well, so long as that that communication is open. If everything's through the chair. That's not a problem. But I know that, you know, I'm not going to hesitate to say to the chair. You know, there's a constituency out there that thinks differently about this. And I'm hearing that from other board members or I'm hearing that from the community, is it being addressed? As a board, whatever the board's goals are and things. So I I think for me. My my role with my current board is really to make sure that they understand how it works. They're novices as a group in terms of government. They're successful people in their own right and all the the things they've done in their world. But I'm the local government municipal management expert in that particular group. And they want to do things that are, you know, the wrong way or maybe they're inappropriate, maybe they're illegal, maybe they're just dumb. Right? And then they have great ideas and it's it's. A big part of my role is to channel that energy into those positive things and to avoid the pitfalls of great ideas that aren't. Going to work or aren't going to happen or can't happen. And so I see that as a core part of the relationship, not knowing any of you and your experiences with local government and so on, but. You know, that's the experience I'm having is guiding into success.
So I'll, there's questions from the board, if you want to do questions from the board first, I can jump into the work. Program he submitted.
So kind of getting back to the the beginning in your your opening statement. Why, you know, for you, why this role, why Carlisle and why now?
So I've had throughout my career terrific bosses, terrific experiences. And and they've built on them. And somebody said to me not too long ago, it wasn't the bosses, you were the one who made it really good. And because because like, everybody's got some bad boss, right, everybody's got some story and. Everybody's got some story and I'm like looking back at my career going, no, they've all been good. And I, I was grateful that the person said that, but I don't really believe that, I do think I've been very fortunate to have had a series of, of really good situations. My Pepperell situation has been less than those other ones, it's still pretty good. But I'm looking for something better, something uh, that fits my personality better, uh, fits my sort of ethos about work better. Um, I've known Tim Goddard, the uh, the TA that, that has retired from here for about eight years. And he and I would talk at meetings, we were both on the LRTA board and would, I would see him through Maya and other organizations. And I was, it was always just this nice, you know, we'd talk about what's going on in our communities. And I always admired what was going on from his perspective in Carlisle, so from afar, there's always been this, oh, Carlisle is one of those really good places. And again, I, I've had really good experiences, I'm having a good one now. But I'm looking for something better, looking to sort of get back to that, like, I just, this is exactly what I want. And reading through this job description. The challenges this town has with affordable housing, they're trying to build a public safety facility. You're, you're struggling with, with economic development and keeping your tax rate uh, in, in a place where the, your citizens can manage. Uh, all these things are again, not unique necessarily to Carlisle, but there's certainly things that I've dealt with and addressed elsewhere. And I'd love to bring those opportunities, that experience here to help solve those problems here. And I don't want to sort of sound like I'm. Bashing Pepperell in any way. But part of what I see is the, a, a difficult thing for me there is they're not all on the same page. And um, there's sort of a. It's, it's more than two sides, but the, the, the sides are sort of crashing together. And in many of these other organizations I've worked in and had these great experiences, people were generally as a group moving in the same direction. And it's a lot easier to feel that momentum and that esprit de corps and stuff when that happens. Uh, Pepperell has a lot of wonderful things going on, but everything is a fight, everything is a tough slot.
How many staff are there in Pepperell?
We have eighty-one benefited employees and we have probably about twenty-five or so part timers, various roles, so a little over a hundred. Uh, that get a regular paycheck and then we have a call fire department, uh, so that's about another thirty or so.
Thank you.
I have a quick question for you, so you said something about your ethos. How, how would you describe that?
I, I'm very optimistic. I'm anticipating a question about my biggest failure, right? You get, you get that a lot of times in an interview. And I was thinking about that and I said, I don't have failures and I'm not being arrogant when I say that. I always see these things as opportunities, everyone makes mistakes, things don't happen the way you want them to. And you can sit there and go, oh, I failed, or you can say, we're going to fix it, we're going to put this back together, going to make it, make it new and better. And um, I take that attitude with me everywhere I go. Um, I have some regrets, you know, I've certainly made mistakes, but, but um, that ethos, this positiveness and. Um, I was struggling at my office when I first got there, there was some really nasty politics among the board. That I walked into a few years ago and um. The admin that uh, works with me was really like low, she, she was getting beat up, you know, and taking it, taking it very personally. And I brought in a little poster and she had it on her uh, desk for quite a while and it just said, we are winning. And it was, you know, it was like one, two steps forward, one step back kind of stuff. But we, you know, over time, we, we built a better, stronger organization. And uh, but yeah, that ethos I think is positive and optimistic.
Andrew, you, you've, your ethos, you described that, but um. In this process, you're going to be dealing and you have dealt with lots of people and everything you've talked about has been how you positively solve these problems. You got grants, you, you solve problems, but there's got to be, there has to be times that you say no, you know, this, you have to have said no to somebody. Tell me about a time that you've done that and why and, and you know, how did you do it?
Yeah, I've been said no to a lot more often than I've said no to others. And it part of it is that positive, like, there's always a way, all right, we, we want to do this, we can't do it this year, we're going to do it next year. So you're saying no to somebody, but you're also working towards, towards that success. Saying no to people, um, a lot of times it's employees who want more money. They feel they deserve more, they, they compare themselves to another employee. And they might be at a totally different classification level and they're being paid very well and appropriately. But they're comparing themselves to another employee they don't respect as much. And they say, I work harder than that person, I should be paid, but they're getting paid. And I've, I'm more than one occasion in my career, I've had to say no to people. Because classifications matter, if we, you know, if we paid everybody with a blank check, we'd have perhaps happier employees, but we'd have unhappier taxpayers, right? So uh, the no's come there, they, we're working on a uh, public safety building. Uh, just, it's at the design level right now, gone through about a year of schematics and, and the, the big high level planning, programmatic designing. And now we're getting into the details. And we're also getting the cost estimates and we know the estimates are up here and we know that's going to be a big number that we may not get to. So we're, we're starting to have conversations about no's in terms of what won't be in this new facility. Uh, an example of that is um, that we actually have multiple stations in our town because of the geographic range of it. And we may get a new building, but we may not be able to renovate one of the older buildings that's going to remain. Uh, the police department wants a firing range, uh, right now they have an outdoor one. That may have to be good enough, because we may not be able to afford to build an indoor one. Those decisions haven't been made yet, but uh, if they get made, those are going to be no's that I'm going to have to have with those staff. And I don't hesitate. It, it's um. You don't want to rush decisions, but when you make them, you want, you know, if it's a no, you want to, you want to deal with it. When you, when you delay it, you, you just wind up with hard feelings or, you know, you don't get to move on as quickly and, and everything is just sort of. Stewing instead of resolving. So no's aren't always bad.
So you, you have a, a wide experience um, on your resume and a very impressive resume. Could you tell us something about you that you want us to know that we can't tell from your resume?
I know how to juggle. I can solve a Rubik's cube. The um, so uh, I, I have two adult children. Both boys, uh, they're uh, living, living great lives in, in uh, not living in my home. The um. Yeah, I uh. I play tennis, I'm a sports enthusiast as a spectator, but um, I, I play tennis poorly. So I'm not sure if that's covering what you're asking for, Nathan, but yeah, stuff that doesn't make my resume, just sort of the, the family stuff and so on.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got a question on more back to your resume experience, so one of the things you mentioned was. Uh, some regionalization efforts, which is in part of what you outlined as Carlisle's challenges, you know, are. Striving to balance affordability and, you know, other qualities, uh, making this kind of trade, so can you elaborate on? How you, how you went about that process?
Sure, uh, your master plan talks about regionalization and, and suggests that the community is sort of. Not quite convinced it's always going to be good and it made a comment about like the, there's a fear of giving up control. And um, it, it is a big leap for a community sometimes, uh, but you already have regional schools. And uh, you're part of the LRTA, which is a regional service that this community gets a, a very tiny benefit from, but nevertheless. You have models that you can turn to and say, these, these work on some level. So in, in working with the town to bridge that, I would start with those types of models and say, what's working with those? And let's try to replicate that. But I think the community needs to know two things about regionalization. You do it to save money or you do it to improve services? And rarely do you get both. So the community needs to decide what it's trying to accomplish. And if you just want to save money, you will probably need to give up a lot of control. Um, and there, there's nothing wrong with that, but that, that's a conscious decision, community needs to make. If they want to get a service that they don't get now and they're willing to partner with somebody. Uh, that's a shared service or that's a, a improvement in service provision. Uh, that's a little bit more positive way of looking at, at regionalization. But if it's just about dollars and cents, uh, we should be frank with the community about that.
Time for one more?
Yeah, one more.
You started this interview and you talked about your um, experiences in Maynard and then compared them to Pepperell. And one of the things that you worked on is building a relationship with the select board. And you said you did that by interpersonal relationships, one-on-one, and you reiterated that midway through. And one of the things you talked about is part of that, is you said, I developed these one-on-one relationships and if they want to go in a direction, I want to support them. And, and so you've supported them, you gave a housing example and, and I was thinking about it relative to this board and. You know, we're going to be goal setting and setting the goals as, as a board to figure out where we think the direction of the town should go. But if you're supporting individual members on the board with their particular agenda. That may be different than what the entire board really would be best suited to do, um, how do you reconcile that?
Sure, it, it, this is really important. John alluded to the goal setting stuff a few minutes ago and it all starts there. So the board is agreeing on those goals. And then when somebody comes in with something that's not aligned with that or not part of that, it's easy to do that redirect and make sure that we're in alignment. So um. We had a board member, he's still with us, who wanted to do some stuff with climate change and it wasn't anywhere on our radar screen. And he just had ideas. And the board was supportive of this one member's uh, initiative, but it needed focus. And they asked me to work with them and we, we wrote a committee charge and we created a committee and that committee's been very successful. And now they've blossomed that into a regional group, I believe Carlisle's part of it. They call themselves NC four. And um, that came from something that was sort of outside of the goal structure. But you know, goals don't need to be static, oh, we, we only do that once a year, no. We got something, something important, let's add it to the goal list, that's essentially what happened here. And so that, we, we took that thing that was not part of the, of this. And it was important to that board member and we found a way to make it something that the whole board supported and it's been a successful thing for the town of Pepperell.
So that does explain his work product. So um, which was, um, he, he had priorities two thousand twenty-two for the Pepperell Select Board, so that gives a explanation on that. Um, any other questions from the board before we go on to closing?
Oh, my question was about the work project. I actually, I just wanted to know if, as part of your work part, product, you uh, included a letter uh, to MHC. Um, about housing, was that more or less directly out of what you were talking about with your relationship with the one?
That's correct, so, so one of the board members has sort of said, I, I want to work, because with a three-member board, they're not supposed to work on things together. And this is another reason why I have these one-on-one meetings so regularly with them, because we can, we can work together. Uh, and make a, whereas this, this board might have, uh, you might pair off and work on things together. Uh, that may be your, your way of doing things, but that, that is the case here, this, this board member is very important to him. Uh, this particular initiative and we're working with uh, DHCD and Mass Housing Partnership and our Affordable Housing Committee. Last year we created a trust, this year we passed our CPA. And you know, we see, you know, the future for affordable housing coming together in Pepperell, because we've taken these, these uh. These steps methodically.
Anybody else? Okay, so uh, we're at the end, um, so uh. So uh, just one more for you, uh, closing statement, so opportunity to give a closing statement to the board.
Well, I greatly appreciate uh, this opportunity with Carlisle. In February, I think I found out about this and uh, this has been the, the longest interview process I've ever been a part of. But along the way, it has enabled me to uh. Really think, is this right for me? And I want you to know that I have come to that and, and do want uh, to look into this community and, and be a part of it. The uh, I have applied for other jobs in years gone by and been like, oh yeah, this is going to be a good fit for me. You know, I, I backed out of interviews, but um, that, that's not the case here, this is a, a interesting community. I love reading through your master plan and seeing the commitment to uh, preserving this community's culture and its open space. I want to be a part of that, the, I, I mentioned my ethos or my philosophy and stuff previously and many of the things that I see. Uh, happening in this community are things that I would personally want to be a part of, so I'd love to have that opportunity.
Andrew, thank you very much for being here this evening and um, I'll walk out and it's been great to meet you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we're going to uh, begin our deliberations now to consider all three candidates and. See what we think.
So madam, here we start with thirty-four candidates. Uh, and I just wanted to, I, I know we talked about this last meeting, uh, but I want to thank the screening committee once again. Uh, had a great screening committee, enjoyed my time with them here and uh, they interviewed seven uh, candidates and. Um, and submitted three uh, to the board as finalists, so you've had those three finalists uh, before you uh, this evening and hopefully you enjoyed your interviews. Uh, with those three finalists uh, this evening, but again, thanks to the screening committee and all the work uh, that they did. We had some great candidates, you know, come through, I think it was a difficult job uh, this time and um, with this and coming down to these three candidates took a bit of discussion. You know, from the screening candidates, but you have your three finalists before you now and they presented themselves uh, this evening and ready for your discussion. Um, and I'm here to address any questions uh, you may have, but it is your discussion um, on moving forward and um. I'll turn it over to you folks.
Okay, and thank you, John and Community Paradigm for the work you've done to get us this far. So um, we have Brian McClain, Michael McCall, Andrew McLean. And that's the order they came, they came through.
I think one of the things, one of the things that I think it's um, you know. There, there's kind of some good news and some bad news in all this and you know, I think one of the things is, I think we had really good candidates. And uh, the great news is that we, I think we have to pick the best of the really good. And I think, you know, the other, the, the bad news is, is. We can only pick one person and we have to pick the best of three really great candidates and that's, that's just, it's going to be tough.
Yeah.
I guess, I'm, I'm wondering if there's some strategy that we can use, uh, like graphing. The good point, you know, what we consider the good points are for these three gentlemen and maybe. You know. Instead of trying to hold them all in our head to figure out, you know, maybe we can use a whiteboard or I don't know how, but to try to catalog. Some of these things, trying to think about how, how to best manage this decision process.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I, I think that part of it is, and I, I want to take up all the, the airtime here, but. I think part of it is, is like, what is, what is the personality that's right for Carlisle right now? I think when it, when it comes down to it, I think they all know how to do the job, I think that. You know, to, 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 to slightly differing degrees, a lot of homework had gone in um, on their part into completely understanding. A lot about Carlisle. And so I think it's, it's, you know, like, what, what are we looking for, for leadership for the town? What is that personality that we're looking for, you know, we talked a lot about that is, you know, who's that person who's going to not only kind of build the team, but. Manage the team and, you know, kind of, you know, take, take ownership of a lot of, a lot of. And, you know, kind of take take ownership of a lot of, a lot of the not going to say issues, but, you know, take ownership of you know, making improvements and furthering, you know, what's already going well right now and who's going to have that kind of a drive and a personality to do it. That's my opinion. That I think they can all three do the job.
They can all technically do the job. Some of them, well, they all come, some come from or have had experience with significantly larger towns. So from a process standpoint, I think trying to equate, I'm always trying to equate public service and my private sector experience. But if you come from a large organization, you learn a lot about process typically. Because they all have the, and you can take, if you're good at it, you can take the best parts of that process knowledge. Not all of it, because you don't need all of it in a smaller town and use that to to an advantage. What what the the X factor is, which several people have brought out is understanding what makes a small-town tech and what's a little different about being in a small town. But again, I think all of them bring, you know, a fair amount of understanding of the small scale. So from a competency, I totally agree. And I think the differentiation in my mind would be the sort of energy around let's call it change. If there's always, there's going to be change because it's a different TA. And we have a lot of change already in our town because of master planning and public state. We have a bunch of issues right now that are coalescing around changing some parts of Carlyle, some ways we do business. Some people are retiring over the next few years. So I think change and the ability to manage change is a characteristic that I would look at and I won't weigh in on my personal opinion. But I perceived a difference between the three on their willingness to embrace change.
So if I can just piggyback on that, in in the profile, there's this one paragraph says creatively, who understands the importance of relationship building and setting the tone for municipal culture and can set the stage for change. So is that cover, you know, so if that's, if that is an important topic, then maybe you talk about three candidates as to which person, you know, addresses that particular piece you're looking for. To start, and then there may be other pieces you wish to address, but that, you know, just to pick that one piece and and try the, the problem with these discussions is focusing in an order that makes some sense. But, you know, starting with, you know, David's comment on that, maybe if you have a discussion around that piece, then pick something else that is important to you.
I guess I'll go out on a limb and maybe you're, so you're saying like, what do we think about each candidate related in relationship to that particular item and then we'll do other items and we'll kind of rate them in that way?
Exactly. So so, you know, it gets back to Kate's point of, you know, trying to a whiteboard effect.
Right.
You know, so i- if if you keep talking about, you know, all these different pieces, you know, then we'll be, we're not going to capture. You know, you know, the the qualities you're seeking for in each candidate. So if we pick, you know, you know, Kate mentioned that, then David says, well, here's a quality. So maybe discuss that and then we'll find the next quality you wish you want to address.
Great. So I'll go first. Put myself out there and I think, you know, a- and I'm going to, and I'm going to link it a little bit and and to to be able to give, give the reasons. I think I I think that the person who demonstrated to me anyway the excitement and the energy around making things different and changing them and, you know, hopefully always for the better was Ryan.
Yeah, no, that's interesting. I I see that. And part of me agrees with that. But I I I guess I'm thinking about being able to set the stage for change and part of that is around you know, building relationships and understanding individual staff members and how to you know, build trust and and also I can't think of a better word and sort of push or challenge staff people. And I thought that Andrew's comments and his manner around, talking around human, human resources and and individual relationships with staff. And his question and his response to the question about if there's a conflict, you know, among staff members. And then also the response to the, if you have a staff member who is refusing to, you know, complete a task. I I was just thinking about the the sort of fit with our current staff. And wondering, not not concluding, but thinking, I wonder if that's, if his manner and also kind of, you know, philosophy about working with staff would be the, a good fit for us.
Right, but you're bringing, I agree with that comment and I thought the same, but you're bringing in a different issue. That's a fit issue. We have to decide. And this is really actually at the crux of it. And this is not only about the TA. This is about our town. How much do we push change and how much do we get along with the way we've done things for whatever amount of years? So fit to me is about how do you fit into a system that we have today? Change is about how you take a fresh approach and really look at things differently. And yeah, you know, sometimes there's going to be some people who don't like it, but it doesn't mean it's not important. So I I do believe that those are two different criteria.
I guess I was.
You may not think change, you may think fit's more important than change and that's
No, 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 I wasn't, no, I, I guess to me, they are, they intersect because to, but to, to, I mean, there's change that is, that we've discussed around changes in Carlyle. But a big part of that is going to be able to change the culture in Town Hall and working with individual staff people that are there now. And so anyway, my my thought process was how do you motivate and move staff people to embrace change, to want to pursue change? So that's, that was the, that was the connection I was making with that.
All are looking to me. I I I tend to think that with the change question, I I think that Ryan really demonstrated that that he has the, you know, skill set and the leadership abilities to both interpersonally relate, and I know this is jumping around the topics, but also the, the ability to to have a vision that works within the administration and within the, the group that he manages as well as the leadership towards working with the board and where the town is at this point. So I tend to, you know, follow what you're saying, David, thinking about that. So.
I'm just going to say, I Barney, I agree with you about the fit. But I think we were talking energy and leadership towards change and I think Ryan got that hands down.
My my note, my my note about Ryan was transformative.
And he came prepared with the already, you know, like
His preparation was
Outstanding, absolutely outstanding. He, you know, talked about our goals and what he would do for that. He brought in the master plan, which is a plan for change in a way. You know, where the others I think have read it, but they weren't. So in terms of energy and leading towards for change, I think Ryan got it hands down.
And I I've just, you know, one of the things, it doesn't have to do with, you know, energy and change or anything like that. But I was a little bit nervous at first when he first started, when we, when he first started the interview. But then when he talked about his daughter, he completely changed. And, you know, it was just like, you know, it it just changed his entire demeanor for the rest of the interview.
I I think also when you talk about leadership and and change or that change aspect, he was able to on the the both those components, tell us something that he didn't think we did that well. He said, and he did it in a manner, in a manner that I think we could all respect and say, he said, you know, your website is not that great. And you know what? It's not. Right, right. But he, 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 well, but you know, that's a, an important skill is to be able to deal with this board and to deal with the the entire town and to be able to to point out the obvious maybe, but and be able to say it. And then, but he came with that and he said, you know what? I'm going to be able to fix that for you. That's, that was pretty powerful to me and just as an example of one thing.
Yeah, I agree. He had, he did it very well and he had the courage to do it.
Right, right. And I certainly agree that his energy level was very, very, I mean, right there, you could see it. And eager, eager to get going.
So some of your other attributes, you know, that you talked about in this were, you know, the ethical leader with strong skills. And you you kind of said all three, you know, kind of, you know, fit that. You also talked about the depth at liaising between the select board, town departments, elected and appointed, you know, boards and residents. So, you know, as a matter of being able to, you know, to interact and liaise across. You have actively informs and supports the select board and values best practices. Creative, I read that one, high-performing, personable, enthusiastic, responsive, good role model, but able to express authority appropriately. So, you know, that's, that's a skill. I think you're, you know, you know, which of these candidates, you know, you know, fit that, you know, for you. Effectively, able to effectively lead and implement select board policies. So these are some of the things, you know, there's many others here, but these are some of the things to point out, you know, as well as the communication. And, you know, so you really hit upon a lot of leadership pieces, you know, in the discussion. That's what we heard. You know, we first interviewed everybody except Travis, you know, you know, in the beginning.
Yeah, I would, I would say that in compliments to both you, Paradigm, and the screening committee for, you know, coming up with these guys. We don't, I don't know what the other people were like, but these certainly are extremely qualified. And on that, some of the things you mentioned, I mean, all of them, I think, have brought their own personal committee experience. I know, I think if my notes are correct, Ryan was on a school board. Obviously, Michael was on several mini boards, so he knows the other side very well. And I think Andrew was on the board, I think. I'm not sure.
Yeah, more regional boards.
But they, they understand the other side and that's important in those kind of interactions. I think they all projected, you know, very strong ethics. I think they all seem to understand the dynamics of the town administrator leadership position. I mean, I, so I obviously some differences here and there, but I mean, they all, to me, projected and not a self-important strength. I mean, not, you know, Ryan was self-deprecating in that comment with his daughter, but they all, they all of them were, you know, they weren't tooting their own horns. I mean, they had a nice style about them, but I think all three projected confidence in their own leadership ability. So again, I would, is that rain?
It is.
I would, of course, I would feel comfortable with any of them in the dynamic of understanding how to work with the boards and the other town people and stuff like that. I would bring bring up another one, which is obviously important to all of us, which is communication. And again, I would say some differences. And I'll toss that one out because again, I might feelings on that, but I think communication is something we always, everybody struggles with and 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 they all brought ideas about it. And I perceived some difference, so discuss.
Yeah, yeah. So we had communications?
Yeah. That was the idea.
One thing I have to say is just like, where was this all our lives? These weekly reports and
How about, you know, merging your social media feed with your website?
Well, I think they were all good communicators. But again, I think Ryan had a spark. The other two would do it, but I don't see the
Ryan had a real plan.
Yeah, yeah, he had a plan and let me just double check my and whether, yes, there was a communication plan that he brought us. And then in the work that's Michael, sorry, the wrong one. And the work plan didn't have that much communication. I mean, it's well-prepared and it's well-presented.
I think they all three can write.
Yeah, they can all write. One thing is that Ryan did emphasize that he also would try to give a graphic for the people that didn't want to plow through everything. So that he was, he's appealing to various, I'll call it learning styles. That's not all people are verbal. Some people are visual.
Well, and when I think about communication, it's not just, yeah, I mean, communication with the board or communication. But, you know, so much communication, as you just said, is is non-verbal and it's how it's interpersonal. And it's how you relate to others because that's what's going to help drive effectiveness in making those relationships, which then leads to getting things done. And, you know, I think you brought up the point about Ryan talking about his daughter. And and, you know, that's a a personal story and you don't have to bring up personal stories. But it's certainly a way to communicate with others and, you know, not only show a bit of vulnerability, but just, you know, relate to others. And I think that that's an important skill. I'm not saying, I I think that Andrew McLean and I think Michael McCall had different communication skills. I think Andrew, as Barney, you pointed out, has, you know, a a nice interpersonal way about him where he certainly, you know, fits with with lots of different people. He'd had lots of functions where he interacted with different groups and and really seeks out the best in in those people. And I think that's a great quality. And I think Michael certainly, you know, in communicating, he has such a depth of knowledge. He is highly qualified with his resume and the things he's done in his life that that can be a form of communication because you draw on all that experience. So that's valuable as well. But when all those things are are kind of come together and we've seen three highly qualified candidates here, I really think that Ryan seemed to have the best ability to kind of put all that together in one package. Is my view.
Do we want to review?
I would say they all recognize the importance of the HR function. They all seem to, I mean, I think all of them probably have, as we, communication is one of them. They all probably actually bring in pretty good HR skills, but, and I forget who it was, somebody said that. I guess it was, Michael said, you know, he recognizes HR as a specialty, so he knows it. But so I think, I mean, I I think all three were aligned on there'll be, there was reasonable alignment on the attributes that one would seek in an assistant town manager. But I have to again say what I like particularly about what Ryan said about it is to be the node of communication for the staff. I mean, getting back to communication. And the only, and this is not a criticism, but I felt that Andrew's answer was a little less complete. Andrew's answer was a little less complete in terms of. Citing compliance as the HR thing, which is very important. I mean, we have to have good compliance. But HR is so much more than just compliance. And and I don't want to say that he wouldn't. Get to that. I'm sure he would, but the other two actually, I think, pretty much hit the nail on the head in terms of the needs for a strong HR function.
Well, actually, um, Andrew said HR functions, compliance, training and benefits.
I guess my notes.
And and he did, he said it was the, the Andrew said it was, compliance is the biggest challenge. And so he's aware of that. I I think, you know, he's. In tune with that. I don't, I don't think there's, I think all three candidates are are in tune with that issue.
With HR, yeah.
With HR. But I did ask questions, um, most recently with of Andrew, but listened to all of the answers about. How they deal with staff issues predominantly, because I think that's something that, you know, when you look at the, the uh, task force, the. Uh, that's out looking at how we govern, um, you know, those issues seem to be recurring, at least in some of the. Notes and in all the the interviews and such is, you know, we need someone who can deal well with the staff in town. And I think that's an important quality in here.
Well, that gets back to Barney's, you know, opening remark on fit. A- Andrew did understand well dotted line, solid line dilemma that we face. It's a question for us whether we want to continue that or we want to push for a change to that entire dynamic, but he certainly understood.
Uh, well, I guess, um, let's talk about citizen engagement. I was pretty impressed, impressed also with Ryan's. Answer to that, that he would go to events, coffee hours, library, trainings, um, he's going to be out there. Um, we've had. A town manager or town administrator who was in his office twenty-four seven and available. But he wasn't out in the community. And this would be a change for us. And I think it would be a good change.
I I think that was true for all three of them, though. They really all stress that as a component of their. You know, potential job here.
I agree with that.
And you, and you do, I, part of me had to though say, wow, you're, you, how many hours of the day, you know? Do you have to give to this? Because uh. It it's a really great goal, but um, I, you know, as we know.
But there's not actually that many things going on in Carlisle, so after the first go around.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they're all, again, strengths, they're all pretty strong at grant writing and they all seem to be. They all seem to be quite strong in finance, in in finance, you know, how they manage that. So. I was impressed with all of them.
Well, actually, I would say Ryan and Michael were the two strong ones in grant writing. It wasn't clear that Andrew was so strong. I mean, he was.
Well, he deferred credit to somebody else.
Yeah, he didn't, he didn't step back when that grant needed to be written, but um. I didn't.
He's a little more self-deprecating though.
Right, which can be a good mark of leadership.
I think in his resume, there was a fair amount of grants. It looked like there were a lot of grants, so. And again, if you can manage a process where others write grants, but they're successful. I'm okay with that.
Thing goes back to your initial statement, warning you talked about how competent they are, you know, on the. Uh, the functional areas of the position, you know, so I think all three are very good in HR. Finances, grants, they'll all accomplish that. So now it gets back to the leadership component, because, you know, I always try, when I go out with these all the time, I always try to stress the leadership.
I think you're right.
And and that's, you know, if I'm going to pick one topic to talk about, that's most important. It's leadership and leadership means a lot of different things. Uh, but looking at, you know, who are you most comfortable with? You know, um, in in the position of, you know, taking the next steps, you know, because, you know, I, you know, I hear. And and I get to leave. So, you know, I don't, I don't have to live with whatever you're deciding. But what I hear is still conflict as to what change is going to, you know, look like, you know, going into your future. Because you still have that component and I I've been in small towns, so I I understand this. Change is difficult. I always call it a dirty word, you know, Bonnie heard me saying this in interviews, you know, I call it a dirty word, you know, in local government, you know, going back to George Collins. You know, type of stuff, but, you know, it it changes one of the, you know, the worst words. So who can work with you, but. Create change in an effective way over a period of time. You know, who do you feel comfortable, you know, with that? Who do you feel comfortable leading your organization? Because you're looking for a different type of leadership moving forward is is what. You know, all this says. Who are you most comfortable, you know, with that? But when it comes down to, you know, the nitty-gritty, these are very freak, th- these three are very competent people.
Oh, no question.
Right.
You know, across the board. So it, so look at those dynamics, you know, um, in in the discussion.
Right, and I'll say again. No matter who we select, whom, no matter who we select, whom we select, um, we are, we are at a. There isn't, in my opinion, there's an inflection point. Between the master plan, which finally, I don't know, I can't speak to finally because I wasn't part of the earlier ones, but. Has been done well and thoroughly and really needs to move into implementation. That's the challenge there. The public safety argument, not argument, the public safety question. Has driven a secondary question about regionalization, which we need to give attention to. We just demographically have three or four major town leadership positions in the daytime government who are approaching retirement. One has retired and it's going to be, you know, there's going to be a replacement. Um, so that's just personnel change, any, including the town administrator, which happened. Um, we have, uh. I think, you know, a kind of a. Challenge, let's say, in managing all these affordable housing issue initiatives in the open space and all these other things with the affordability. Question and the aging, at least one of them pointed out on the aging demographic. So. I believe that we have to embrace change anyway as leaders of the town. And I take your fit point, but I'm not sure fit is the right thing. I think exactly what John said. With whom do we feel the most comfortable going stepwise into this period where we actually. Can affect some meaningful change to, you know, we've been a pretty hidebound organization, right? Done things the same way a lot. And it's worked because we're rich and we don't have these big city problems. So it's worked for us, but is it right, you know? And I, that's so, I think I totally support that view.
So is, you know, suggestion, is the committee ready to put a name in nomination? You know, to be your next town administrator and have a discussion around that? Or do you need to further discuss? You know, um, a a finer points here. Um, so i- if you, if someone thinks you're ready for a final discussion. Maybe someone suggests, you know, a name and put in nomination with the second and begin the discussion process around that.
Nathan, frowning.
Frowning.
Oh, well, you kind of look.
With socket, look, I understand.
Well, let me ask a question of of us as a group, um. Do we, are are we in agreement that, um, sort of the leadership ability or. Um, approach to leadership is one of the key things that we want to have in our. Next TA and along with that, the, the, um, you know, the ability to. To help guide us through the changes, um, or at least the. Addressing the, the, the. The fact that we are at a crossing point, we're at a cross, what's the right word? Crossroads, thank you. Um, and. Because I think that's an important. If we're in agreement about that, that definitely has an influence on my uh. Thinking about the three candidates.
I I think that's a really great question, you know, because, you know, I came in here thinking. That we had decided that there was a particular thing that we really wanted. Um, and um. You know, I I think that understanding where we all sit and what are we looking for in this next leader. Is really important, right? Because some of the things that we've been talking about. You know, was that, you know, we wanted somebody who was going to take the bull by the horns, you know, we, you know, obviously, we wanted them to. Really kind of, uh, respect and nurture the culture of the town and 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 the employees of the town. Um, but we wanted somebody who was going to, um, kind of drive change. And we even talked about that, I think, in the last. In the last voice, like the meeting or or sometime recently, when we were talking about kind of what our questions were going to be, is like. You know, how much do we want them to be strategic and how much do they, we want them to just be taking directions from us? And I think we landed was. We wanted somebody who was going to be strategic because we turn over and and this was going to be the consistency that we would have. And and so I think, i- i- I think to me, the answer to that question would drive me towards. You different candidates, right? Um, right now. Do we want somebody who's going to respect the culture, but drive change and drive us really? Or do we want somebody, you know, or or and and I don't, I'm not saying anything about any candidates, or are we looking for somebody who's. A really great town administrator in, we know is going to be able to carry things forward and kind of just take direction from us. Um, and manage things very, very well. Which of those do we want?
And on that, I, that's a great uh, statement. And. On that note, I mean, we have to self-challenge about, if we're talking about change, it's also, how do we operate? Because we do, the the nighttime government in this town makes a lot of decisions. That's okay in a way because it's free and it's got some, you know, passion, I guess, because you're a citizen, but it's not always best practice. So I think.
Right.
You know, that's a big piece that. Kind of came out because I would say, you know, at least in my tenure, we we've managed Tim. We always managed Tim. Now, some of that's on Tim, but a lot of it's on us. And so, yeah, I think these guys, and I even see it in Steve, you know, Steve's been pretty careful because he's interim, but I could see. He could easily manage us. He just does chooses not to, you know, so that's a great thing that I think we should. And we're deciding not just for us, but for.
Right. Like all of them, exactly.
Which is what, you know, people in management always tell you. You gotta learn.
Yes, right, exactly. Um, I I guess I'm ready to have, if not to, I don't think we. I think we want something almost in between. We, I think there are times where we need to be managed. And there's other times where we need to manage the other direct, you know, we need to manage. I I'm thinking of a couple of decisions that. We made that we really could have used some in the past, that we really needed somebody to say, guys, awfully well-intentioned. Um, but you really shouldn't make that decision because it's not going to be, you know, to give us that advice. As somebody who's a strong enough leader who can do that. Um.
And, you know, unfortunately, maybe in reading through the references, I think there was a reference for all of them about how they had said. About, about, you know, the the comment was, well, we're no, you know, don't do that, that they stood up and they said, stop.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, are we.
Maybe brought too many good people.
Yeah. The, uh, so, but your phrasing of the sort of two choices, um. I mean, I'm, I'm, I would like us to go with the first choice of. A leader who's. Ready not just to be a really good manager, but will also manage us more and really help. Lead us toward the changes that, you know, we need to make.
Goes back to the question between, the difference between leadership and management. Do we want a leader or do we want a manager?
Yeah, we really want both, right? But um, we want, but we want the leadership side of it as well as the manager. Yeah.
So I just have a quick question. Could you remind me? Who were the people on the search committee?
It was, um, Chief Soros. Deepa Chungi, who's the chair of the PTO, um, Madeline Blake from the planning board. Uh, Peggy Wang, town clerk, Mark Way, um, who we've, some of us know from here in town and. Yeah, does a lot of leadership work. And, oh, yeah, and and Victor Liang and myself.
Were you guys pretty aligned on your?
Yeah. The the three finalists, absolutely.
Finalists were unanimous.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
And there was a good discussion. There there was another one or two candidates were fairly strong, but I think they were unanimous. Um, in the end, it was.
In the end.
Unanimous vote, but it was a, was a strong discussion.
This is strong discussion about whether or not more than three should be there or that.
No, I think they were comfortable with the three.
But we had, but but there were a couple other people that were close, you know, but when it came down to, we had. Concluded that three was a good number to put forward for a variety of reasons. And, um.
Yeah. Any more and I think we'd be.
No, no, but my, my point wasn't, should they have, should we have gotten more? My point was. In in it being unanimous and, you know, in the, in it being a big discussion, was it, was it a big discussion about it being these three or was it a big discussion? Discussion about which of the three would.
I think it was which of the three. I don't think there was any disagreement in the final three. But the, you know, there there were two other candidates that certainly, you know, brought some good discussion from the committee. Um, and, um, yeah, I I think there was a discussion on should there be a fourth or not, but they were very comfortable. With that vote with the three. Okay, but there were, I I just want to point out there were some good other candidates, you know, uh, but these were three. I think that was unanimous. Well. But these were the three to move forward.
The other ones didn't have Mac in their name.
Yes. Yeah, would wreck my joke about my candidates, you know.
All right, so where are we?
Well, we have friends.
Side, yeah.
Leadership.
I I'm on the leadership end of that spectrum. I think this is a good time in Carlisle's history and where we are in an inflection point. And these challenges that we have ahead of us that we are all aware of and we're going to work as a select board, but I think we need a. A town administrator who can help guide in, guide more in the terms of leadership and guide our board as well in that. So, it's my thought.
I think the change has really already happened. You know, with COVID and all that, a lot of the changes happened, you know, without us leaving it or knowing it. And now I think we, we, the reason we need to change is now we need to adapt to where we are.
Change always happens. You just decide to go with it or proactive about it or not.
Well, you can be proactive about it. I mean.
Yeah.
I agree. I agree with Travis.
So it sounds like we're, yeah, it sounds like we're settled on a leadership question, so maybe.
Barney's being kind of cagey. I don't know, did you?
No, 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 I'm, I'm saying, I'm. Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement with that. Um, and I I think that's a good way, I think Nathan's framing of it is, was helpful and it's a good. I think it's a good, that's the priority. I would agree with that. Yeah. So that's.
So.
Yeah, you want to make a.
You know, I'll make a, I'm not sure exactly what the motion is that I'm making, but I'll give it a try. You can, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, I moved that we, uh, uh, discussed Ryan McLean as a finalist. Um, a- a- as the candidate for, um, town administrator for Carlisle. So I'm not making a motion that we're voting on him. I'm making a motion that we're singling him out.
To discuss about him, okay.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Who's recording? Is Jen?
That was what you were suggesting, right?
Uh, you can, i- i- it, the the motion officially in the end needs to be, you know, you're appointing, but if you wish to do it this way, that's fine. That's your choice.
Okay.
I was just looking for a motion. So, you know, you can do it this way for a discussion. Uh, and see if this is your final candidate and then make a motion in the end, you know, to appoint subject to, um, a contract negotiation.
Okay.
Can I ask, we're in discussion now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you mentioned contract negotiations, but what about background checks and references? That's all been done.
But, yeah, so that.
Everybody's fully vetted. Everybody receives fully.
We've done the, we do it, you know, our firm, we do it prior to, you know, uh, not after the fact. So, you know, so you know if there's an issue. Before you have a discussion, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, and so I'll say one other thing, and, you know, I, from a personal belief. Um, because I deal with the military quite a bit in my job. You want to look at leadership? Look at military. Those guys are really work at that stuff all the time. They just do, you know. Comment.
And and as part of that discussion, if we're going to talk about that, I mean, his role, I think he explained it pretty well, but. He's the top of the, you know, non-officer. Crew and and that's a wonderful position to be in because he's the person who relates to everybody there. And he's got to do the same thing in that job that he's sort of doing here is that he, you know, has to push upward and say, okay. You know, these are my marching orders. I need to figure out how to implement that. And that's a great skill.
And also vice versa, as the um. You know, Sergeant Major, he's um. Also the one that has to push, uh, you know, the the officer. But I mean, it's not just him.
Both ways.
Yeah, it's both ways and it takes some. Real leadership to be able to do that um, with the commanding officer.
He gave him pretty glowing remarks and.
Yes.
In the reference.
On other qualities, then, that, you know, I I think, and you brought this up initially, but I think, you know, relatability. Is important and I thought he was relatable on lots of different topics um, and relatable not only as a person, but. Relatable in his technical skills, you know, on talking about a complex issue. And then being able to explain it and and explain it to not only us, but explain it to everyone that in town. That's going to need to understand um, issues.
Transparency. High on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think he also just in his preparation demonstrated a commitment to. Really wanting this and commitment to, you know, doing a good job. Um, he put the homework in. And really demonstrated, I mean, he clearly, I'm not saying the others didn't, but he clearly wants this job.
Right, yeah, right.
Right, and I think it's a, you know, point to talk about. I think that certainly is very honest about. The reason, you know, in terms of the commute, which is real, if you have little kids, we know that very well. I think. Personally, I think he's a rocket ship. And I think he will. I believe he will outgrow this mission at some point. But also seeing him, and that's okay. I don't think we need a, you know, lifetime assignment, but. Um, I do, you know, again, military being part of it, sense of commitment, sense of duty to. You know, complete the mission that you've been asked to do. So I I think. We'll get good years. And then I think he will be, he's just a super high quality individual. I just. I love Carlisle, but you know what? There's big fish out there, right?
Yeah, but I think, no, I don't, I don't know, because he was very clear. About wanting to be in a small town. I I think that, you know. Obviously, anybody could leave for any reason, then, you know, people get bored and rules and everything, but. I think that he would drive this role to be what it needed to be for him and it would be up to the board.
When you say he could leave for any reason, one thing that came up, and this is really a question to you, John, is about. His military service and is an active duty military, he could be called, he was called for service. And how does that impact us? And should we be thinking about that in this decision making or not?
So he did address this, you know, at the screening committee. I want to be careful, you know, but, you know, because his, you know, he he's twenty years. Um, you know, military, so he can, you know, um, he can leave twenty years as a magic mark, you know, i- in the military. With a young family, um, I believe he has made the decision that he is not going to deploy again. And he kind of said that tonight a little bit without, I don't think he came out and said, I won't, but he won't, I believe. So he's done three deployments, you know, um, and and one fairly recent. But he's got a six year old, I believe. He he just had a birthday, you know, he a birthday party the day after the screening uh, committee. And um, I don't believe, I I think he, you know, he he knows where he needs to be, you know, right now. So as he said, he's willing to stay and work as a mentor in the program. But not, you know, um, in uh, but probably not willing to deploy. Um, and I, I hopefully I'm I'm saying this correctly from what I heard at. You know, in talking to him, screening and what he said tonight. So hopefully that gives you a a sense of that.
Yep.
Uh, we do have a new military benefit, however, in our. Personnel policy that is uh, certainly a lot richer than it used to be. Uh, so if he did have to take some time off, um, that can can affect us.
But I think he'll be the two weeks per year plus the one month, uh, one weekend. You know, r- rather than.
Is he reserves now?
Yeah, he's a national guy.
Okay, national. I mean. I've I've learned through this, through you, John Paradigm and Steve Ledoux. That. Getting an interim is is okay, you know, I mean, it works out fine. And I think. If you start something and you're gone for even a couple, three months, whatever those deployments are, I don't know. You know, interims will call you up and you'll plug in an interim and the interim will probably keep things going the way the. You know, if it's Ryan, the way he started it. So I don't fear it, you know, I don't fear.
If 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 he's somewhat like he appears, he will be contacting us remotely.
And that's what he talked about is, you know, one of the things he sent me, he did remotely and he he managed to secure. Um, the uh, the agreements back home, you know, while on, you know, so I I think you'll, you know, but anyways, I I don't.
You don't think that though?
I don't believe that's a future issue.
Yeah, I think I think he was pretty clear. What I heard pretty clearly was that it wouldn't be, but I certainly would not hold into that.
Right.
Right? I mean, I think.
You're just going to be aware of that too.
If if he's deployed, thank you for your service and we have this benefit and we will work it out.
Correct.
Yeah.
I wish I had three months I could get away.
Any other discussion missed on that?
I mean, you know, Bernie, you you, you know, you were talking about, you know. When I mentioned kind of, you know, transformative and and change and everything, you you went to fit. Um, should we talk a little bit more about that?
Thanks, Nathan. So. I think with. I think with Ryan, um, you have somebody that understands very well how to work with people and I think. You know, his his army experience as well as what he's done um. In Hubbardston, he. He expresses um, a lot of. You know, a lot of the uh, sort of qualities or or knowledge about how you work with people. I think. It it may be, you know, it'll be, I think. There's the potential for. It to be more of a. What, more of a, both on the one hand, exciting and energizing to have a leader in town hall who. Is really going to get out there and get to know his stat, his his staff and. Uh, figure out what they need and how to help them get better. I mean, his answer about. Um, you know, leadership and management, what I really liked to, under the management part was, you know, hit the goals he'd like each person to have. One is how do I prove myself? One is, how do I make my department better at serving residents? And then the third one was a goal that fits in with the. Select Board Master Plan goals. But I think as in terms of fit, I think it may be more unsettling, you know, more um. You know, more of a challenge, uh, which, you know, uh, for. I think that's good. I think that's can be really good, very, very healthy. But I, but I think it'll be more unsettling than.
I think the way I would, I'm sorry.
No, you go, you go ahead.
You know, thinking about it, what, you know, while he was. Speaking and, you know, thinking about. Where where we are now and everything, I think that. One of the things I'll put out on the table is I think that he would bring a shocking amount of structure.
Right.
There you go. Yes. You're you're putting your finger more, you're making it more um. Specific and I I I agree with that.
But but it's, and then I agree with all that, and I think in my experience, that's more effective if everybody's going through it. It's like everybody's going through it, right?
Yes.
I mean, it's not like I'm getting singled out because I didn't, you know, do this task or I might. No, we're all doing it. We're all doing it, right? Again, army way. And I really like, for example, his idea. Go on town hall outing, like take the whole staff and let's go over to the school, like let's go do that. Like, people will be like, wow, like I haven't been out of the office in twenty years. You know, it's a good thing, right?
And I guess the other question we have to ask ourselves. Excuse me, about the fit is um. There's fitness fit, you know, I'm thinking of our newer employees. I think he's going to fit very well with our newer employees.
There's the employees. And then there's the board. I think we need to think about that for both, right? Are are we ready? And I was saying this before, are we ready for that? I am, but are we ready for that? Are we ready to be managed?
And other boards as well.
Yes.
Right, it won't just be the select board. But us, for sure, right?
But I think, yeah, totally, and for me personally. I I feel. Sometimes, what's the adjective? Daunted, I guess, by the enormity of tasks in the prior administration. That I feel we have to drive the change. I mean, I drive change all day in my company. Then I come at night and I have to drive more change? Like, really? Like. I sat, you know, six years in this room, basically, school committee. Didn't really have to do that, especially once Jim took over, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that's sort of maybe an allegory. When Jim took over, there was a tiredness and kind of a. There was some malaise going on in the school. He came in and like, like caffeinated, you know, and boom, 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 and stuff happened. Like he organized things and stuff happened. And school board could be more of a board at that point. School board was like writing policy, like grinding through things that just are energy sapping. And we kind of stopped. We went to big picture things. And 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 I would see that. So I, yes, absolutely, that's a challenge. Are we ready for that? I'm ready for that.
Yeah, and I'll just say on a, the level of being the chair for this last year, I am so ready not to have to do all of the. Things that. The day to day stuff, yeah. It'll be, and I think that would be true with any of the three of them, frankly. A lot of work that we have been taking on that we, that, yeah, will be, would be taken care of by. One of the, any one of these, but yeah, certainly, Ryan.
Um, I just want to, um, one of the things that I've been on the MFC. And there's another place where there's a committee that was being. At at nighttime, except they were meeting in the mornings, um, had been. Required to do way too much work, um, and it's not efficient and it's not good. I mean, I think the jobs are getting done okay, but it they certainly could be done better and they certainly could use a lot of. Um, staff support and any one of these guys, again, I think would have been good, but it's, again, I think. Brian is the one that said things that, you know, um, warmed the cockles of my heart. In terms of of um, the procurement, well, maybe it wasn't him, maybe it was. Was not him. That was um, that was Michael.
Michael.
Yeah, Michael. And it's like, oh, boy. Um, so that if if we don't, Michael. I do want to make sure that we get that procurement. Taken care of. Grants, um, and I I, but one of the things I did think that Ryan did discuss a lot was the grants and. And I think that's also important. Um, in fact, I just wrote, um, from the ARPA point of view, ARPA would like to see a grant writer. To make sure that we're not spending ARPA money on on projects that we could get other money for instead. So, again. He would fill that. They would all fill that very nicely. I'm looking forward to that. As well.
Are we, are we wanting to make a decision?
Yeah, it sounds like.
Okay, are we wanting to make a decision tonight?
Do we have to close the current motion? Do we have to vote the current motion?
No, it was more just.
I move that. We appoint Ryan McLean. Of Dunstable, Massachusetts, on the other side. As Carlisle's town administrator pending a contract negotiation and and the other process that has to be done prior to it being done.
Second.
More discussion.
Yeah, so any, any discussion.
I did, I did appoint the right person, right?
Both first and last name, right? Yes, Ryan McLean. Okay, well, I think uh, we we, it sounds like we've had our discussion unless somebody has something more to add. All right, then I think we uh, let's, uh, we can do this as a voice vote. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. We have reached a decision and it's unanimous.
So congratulations. Um, congratulations to Ryan. Um, I suggest you appoint someone to negotiate the contract with them. You know, from the board to set your process uh, for negotiating, uh, you know, that contract with them so that you can bring it to. Hopefully, your next board meeting, uh, you know, to review the contract Tuesday, well, maybe, you know, hopefully Tuesday, um, but.
Did you, um, John, did you provide us with a template of?
So I can send you the model contract if you wish. Steve maybe has that, but I'll I'll send that.
Provided by the state, so John and I talked about that.
You know, the managed association put out a model contract that's been used for about twenty years out there, so I'll send you that docket. Um, and I, if you probably look at Tim's contract, that might be, you know, fairly similar.
Steve's, I'd be happy to do.
Help with the contract negotiation, you're saying? Yeah, so um, I'd be happy to do the contract negotiation and. If one other member of the select board would like to join. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you say that. What did you say? Oh, I thought you were offering Steve Ledoux. Sorry, sorry.
He said with Steve Ledoux.
Can can I'm, I'm fine with either of you doing it. I guess from a process standpoint, because we have already a. An executive session planned for Tuesday, which isn't very far away. What I would, what I'll suggest is, and you can participate remotely or you can feed the information ahead of time, but if we. In executive, if we looked at the model contract and we looked at the salary range, expectations, whatever you can give us.
Right.
We as a board can set the parameters and then we can. And then send Nathan off or whoever to, you know, do it. So that would be, that's my proposal, because Tuesday's only like.
I suggest maybe a suggestion.
Yes.
Um, you know, you have, if Nathan's the person, have a discussion with Ryan, you know, for a a discussion as expectation, so he can bring that to the.
Kind of a preliminary, yeah.
Preliminary, uh, and he may be offering, you know, he he may be comfortable with something that, you know, I mean, it it's basically salary.
Yeah.
You need to discuss, you know, um, and then, you know, vacation time is usually the next piece.
Right.
Um, after that, you know, the 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 model contract will give you many pieces and Steve would do can certainly help you, you know, with many of those pieces, but if. Uh, if you assign, you know, one of you to talk to, you know, Ryan prior to. And have the discussion, so you can have that at the meeting Tuesday night, that should help you move forward a little bit faster.
Can I suggest that we do a townwide COLA rather than building it into the contract? If possible.
Let's not have the negotiation right now. I like what John suggested.
Um, so, um, what I'm hearing is that we. We should have a. we should have a small group. So let's say Nathan, if you and I are, if you're able, if we're able to work something out where we can talk with.
Ryan, I would prefer to bow out rather than have it be two-on-one.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I just, I don't, I think this is an individual thing. It's not like it's a, a union contract or something. I think this is just like a discussion, like Steve and I went to breakfast for a couple hours and we just worked through it. I think, I think it's, I think it's a one-on-one thing. I don't know what you'd normally see, but.
It can go either way. I, I don't have an opinion, you know, two-on-one or one-on-one. I'm just saying, you know, you should have some, you should have his expectation going into the meeting Tuesday night. That'll move the process. You know, you know, much quicker than you talking Tuesday night, then getting his expectation. You take away one meeting by doing that.
Right.
So whether you, you, you want two people or one people, that's, you know, I don't want to, you know, that's your discussion.
Okay. Funny, I was thinking two would be good just to have two different voices and, but if, if you prefer not to, I, I could do it on my own with him. I'd, I'd like to be involved.
I'm happy to be a second if you'd like to.
But would you like to join me?
I'll do.
Okay. Okay. I think that'd be great.
All right, good.
So I'll send you both that, you know, the, the model contract as I had sent you a model interim contract. I'll send you the model managers contract and then you should have that discussion. I'll let, you know, you know, I'll be calling all three people tonight.
Okay. Good.
To be contacted tonight. So I'll let them all know. And if one of you, you know, you know, talk about who's going to take the lead to.
Contact.
Ryan and then have some conversation prior to Tuesday night.
Yeah.
Right. So I think we also just need to let Tom know that we're going to want a pretty quick turnaround because he, he also, you know, they provided the model.
Town council has to review it.
A lot of edits to it.
Right.
And so we'll want to make sure that we're leaving time for that to happen.
Right.
We can do that right away as soon as you send it, right?
Right. So hopefully, you know, it sounds like we're not going to be talking about the contract details too much on, well, it will be our feedback on Tuesday. And then, so it would be the next select board meeting when we may be voting on the contract and getting it signed.
Correct. Yeah. Which we would July 12th. So.
So when you talk to Ryan, get us, whoever does it, get a sense of his notice period.
Yes.
As well.
Right.
Yeah. And we have to understand, you know, pre-planned vacations and things like that. Just so we understand with, because everybody has them.
Right.
You know, I would hope that he would take some time off between jobs because those are always the best vacations to take.
Yeah, we still have Steve on, right? And we have, we don't have any limits on his time. And we're not running up against like.
Correct.
No. You're good with Steve. Yes.
Yeah. Right. Right.
Now Steve may be looking at it a different way.
I was going to say it, but I decided not to. He'll be happy.
Well, so before we adjourn, I just want to again, thank you, John, and thank Community Paradigm for really helping us, doing a terrific job and helping us find what I think is a really excellent choice.
I want to go back and thank your screening committee and the board here. It's been, it's been a good process. Yes.
Yeah. Good.
Can't always say that.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. We, we started early on and, you know, so.
Right. All right. Well, that's great. And is there anything else we need to mention? So Tuesday night, we're executive session at 6:30 and we'll be back at our regular spot. Cause Mark has that all under control. Thank you, Mark and Andre. And excellent. May I have a motion to adjourn, please? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Meeting.